Present and audible.
Present, Counselor Simmons. Counselor Simmons. Absent. Counselors on demand. Absent, Mayor Siddiqui.
Present and audible.
There are six members present.
Number one, pleasure of the city council.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Can I pull number nine, please?
Number nine.
Eight and not, oh, two and eight, sorry.
Two. And eight.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Counselor Supreme, Council's on demand.
Number seven and eight.
Eight's been pulled, so we'll pull seven, fourteen and fifteen.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Governor.
I would just like to be recorded at present.
For the record, we've called one, two, seven, eight, nine, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. And.
On that motion, Counselor Carlo.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, one absent.
So, we can do a roll call to suspend the rule.
On that motion, Counselor Carlo.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, one absent.
So, we'll go to City Manager Agenda item number one, communication transmitted from Louis.
City Council submitted questions. The City of Cambridge announced on Friday that with the Commonwealth State of Emergency ending on June 15, significantly, the city will rescind this declaration of a public health emergency effective June 15, which is also in line with the Commonwealth. Due to the rescission of these team for the plan we created executed over the past 15 months, our data-driven interventions were designed to get us to this point in an area of two cases. Our percent of COVID positivity is down to one-tenth of one percent. The Commonwealth positivity rate is under one. These numbers reflect the hard work that we have collectively engaged in this over this past year. I want to thank our residents, residents and businesses for their sacrifice. Today, I met with departments to discuss how we will be further reopening city buildings to the public over the course of the next few months. As you know, access to public builders currently opening approach. As I remind you, in June, we will be transitioning our testing program from seven days a week to four days a week. Testing for June will continue at Cambridge Side, Christian Life Center at 85 Bishop Allen Drive, St. John's Church at 2254 Mass Ave. And testing information, including dates and hours, are available online at cambridgema.gov/testing. People age 12 and older than 19, the city encourages everyone to get vaccinated. Finally, before I get to this council questions, I want to thank the expert advisory panel, amount of time to the city, and we are grateful to them from their service and expert advice. With the lifting of the state of emergency, we have determined it is time to include the thanking the members of the COVID-19 Expert Advisory Panel. I will now answer Council Sabrina Willis' question, and then Claude will address Council Nolan's question on June 15. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, with the lifting of the Commonwealth State of Emergency, Cambridge temporary eviction moratorium will end on June 15. The end of this order does not mean that people will be immediately evicted and removed from their homes. There is a court process, and only a court can issue the eviction order. The citizen moratorium prevented a court order from being enforced, but did not prevent the process of seeking an eviction to take place. State moratorium ended in mid-October. Initially, there were concerns that once the state moratorium ended, many filings would take place. However, we have not seen a significant, the significant amount of financial assistance that has been given and made available for rental assistance through the city and state. The city has offered residence for household assistance totaling $3.1 million. And with the continuation of city funds for rental assistance through the housing stabilization that today in the RAFT RAFT, ERMA, and the HEAR, all three of these programs assist tenants, in some cases, homeowners. This allows landlords to request funds on behalf of their tenants. Cambridge Housing Authority has implemented the Tendency Privation Program, which includes outreach and assistance to accessing resources and services that has resulted in a very, very few court filings. Other affordable housing providers and management companies have worked at the eviction moratorium. In addition, the city's housing liaison and director multi-services team continue to monitor court filings weekly. Staff from the MS for both De novo and Cambridge-Summit Legal Services. It is important to note that the tenant's right and resource notification ordinance is still in place as they standing on, as well as other services available to them. Finally, the city enlarging housing in Cambridge and interdepartmental citywide information and outreach campus. I know that was a long answer to a question, but the city has put a tremendous amount of work into this area. When we put the moratorium in place, we knew it would be end once the state of emergency ended. As I have just explained, we have financial and informational resources in place to assist our residents. I want to give a special thank you to Mara and Maria and their staff for their work to monitor evictions and proactively attempt to assist these residents. This concludes my question. As we vaccinated yet, I remind you not to let your guide down and continue to follow relevant public health guidance, including wearing high-quality mask, properly fitting mask. Went to it here, the relevant local and state mandates regarding masks, and wash your hands frequently. I will now turn it over to Claude. Claude?
Okay, as always, I'm joined by our medical director, Dr. Lisa Dober. Over team to field any clarifying questions. So, just a moment of thanks to our partners who have worked side by side and hand in hand with our department over these last 15 months. City partners, community partners, as you've heard from the city manager, our private sector partners have all come together to help us mitigate the pandemic and protect the health of all those who live, work, live, learn, work, play, and pray in the city. So, just want to acknowledge that as a backdrop, and now let me get to the quick snapshot. I know that this is dated May 24th, so just know this is a carryover from last night's presentation to the council. Could I move to the next slide? So, our case count as of this afternoon, we're as, as reported to our department. Again, 6% of all cases are active, and just know, as you've heard from the city manager, we're still holding steady at two and a half, and currently, the overall positivity at 0.11% as reported by the Mass Department of Public Health. So, just know that this is great news, and the city should be very proud, and I think as of today, there was one additional variant reported among Cambridge residents. So, that's a total of 14, 29, and then three assigned to the B1351. So, just know that we continue to pay attention to this and working in concert with our state-level partners. We continue to encourage everyone who is eligible to get vaccinated. And as you'll hear shortly, our vaccination rates remain very strong. We want them to remain strong over the coming weeks and months. Next slide, please. So, community testing, again, not surprisingly, we've seen a downward trend since the page to be the case. We have now dropped down to, we are, we will be dropping down to three sites, four days a week, Wednesdays, Thursdays, Saturdays, and Sundays. So, Wednesdays, Thursdays, Saturdays, and Sundays, we will no longer offer testing on Monday. And just know that this has been by design to move to this space. We will also be co-locating testing as well as vaccinations at these sites. This is by design, and I just want to thank our partners for helping us to be agile and creative as we continue to get shots in arms to our residents. So, starting in June, again, three sites, four days a week, and we'll continue that momentum through the end of the month of June, and then we'll revisit the schedule. Next slide, please. So, regarding our vaccine update, so to date, what you see is that we've had over 4,000 individuals who have received at least one dose of Moderna or the single shot of J&amp;J. In terms of doses, we've had over 6,700 doses administered. Again, if you include voting doses of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine over at the Cambridge Side Mall. So, that site is still, still active. And right now, we're really zeroing in on getting due tomorrow, May 26, and then the second dose will be three weeks later on Wednesday, June 16. So, we do have an allotment of 600, five vaccines. And the updated figure, I believe there are 140 students that have signed up as of today. This was as of yesterday, we had 128 appointments confirmed. Next slide, please. Regarding questions, so let me queue it up. So, Counselor Nolan asked the question regarding, since herd immunity is important to stop the spread and new variants are continuing to arise, it is important that we continue the successful drive to get everyone possible vaccinated. Again, this is a question by Counselor Nolan. Counselor Nolan goes on to say, we are fortunate that due to concerted efforts, our vaccination rates across different ethnic and racial groups outpace the state, outpace the state, essential workers and other workers who live elsewhere, also those who work in Cambridge. So, again, as I've shared each week, our department and the city's outreach and messaging specifically will continue with particular emphasis on communities and areas that have not yet been vaccinated. Just know that we are able to amplify our reach with our gene fleet. Over 4,000 individuals vaccinated in the city-run clinics. This gives you broad strokes that we've seen that over half live in Cambridge. One in five work in Cambridge, and just know that we're still cleaning up some data in terms of fields that we're left blank, because again, these are self-help. So, additionally, those who work in Cambridge and live elsewhere can be vaccinated in their home municipality or at a regional site. Next slide, please. So, the next two slides, we continue to show the comparison between Cambridge and Massachusetts. For this slide, we're looking at vaccination by race and ethnicity. So, again, as we've heard each week, as we've shared, Cambridge continues to outpace the state for the percentage of age significantly and consistently outpaces the state in percentage of Black and Latinx residents who have been vaccinated, demonstrating that our outreach and community still show about 5% of the population not captured or reflected on this slide. Next slide, please. Same pattern, if you compare Cambridge and the Commonwealth, and if you look at by age and gender, this has been consistent over these many weeks. Just know that Cambridge continues to outpace the state in every category and proportion of teens and adults by age and gender who have received at least one dose of vaccine. I also want to point out the significant jump in vaccination rates for those between ages of zero to 19. Last week, I reported out that we were somewhere around 14% of this population had received at least one dose. This week, we're showing three times that, we're at 43%. Again, this is part and parcel with the timing of those who are eligible or children to be vaccinated, that they have an opportunity to tap into the resources made available by the city, as well as our partners through the Cambridge Health Alliance and the other neighboring cities, or not constrained in being able to respond to the situation of signs that public health may be compromised. Again, as you've heard, and we reported out last week, the state is preparing to full rescission of the statewide mask mandate that goes into effect on May 29. Nearly all the COVID-related restrictions will also be lifted. Just note that individual businesses can establish their own policies for employees and customers while on their premises. On June 15th, on Tuesday, June 15th, the statewide emergency order is scheduled to be lifted, scaling back the governor's power to impose COVID-related mandates, as you've heard from the city manager. So, just know that at the moment, Cambridge is following this timeline for lifting the mask mandate and specific vulnerable populations. And since that our department's ongoing disease surveillance is ongoing and will continue to track cases by census tract, zip code, age, race, and ethnicity. The state do want to thank the city manager and Dr. Seiya, and all the members of the expert advisory panel, the partners, for helping us with this work on the ground. So, just know that at the end of the day, deliver masks to restaurant employees. And lastly, I think it's important to remember that there are some individuals who feel more comfortable wearing a mask even if they are fully vaccinated.
Pleasure of the city council, clarifying questions on the presentation. May I see Vice Mayor Mellon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to the city manager and his team. Thanks for this presentation. It's always so nice to be hearing good news. I feel like it's been a long, long road, and it feels like there's really some brighter days ahead, and thanks to all your team for making that happen. I had a question about the vaccination clinic tomorrow at the high school.
Thank you. Through Madam Mayor, I'm going to ask Dr. Doberstein to talk about tomorrow's team clinic over at the team health center.
Thank you, Claude, and you, we wish we could do their parents too, but we are ready and geared for the kids, and we'll limit it to them.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, if there are that they would be eligible for.
We will, we will be happy to give them information about where they can get vaccinated.
Great. I think it's a great opportunity for to snag some of those parents who haven't.
They're worried, they're hesitant, there'll be lots of people speaking lots of languages there who can, you know, do a little one-on-one discussion while they're waiting to get their kid vaccinated. So, I would welcome the chance to talk with anybody who's, who's looking to be vaccinated or has worries about being vaccinated.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I think that's, that's good to know, so that if parents want to bring their kids and they aren't actually sure if they want to do the vaccination for their kids, that there will be some people on site to answer those questions, help them.
I don't see any more hands, so I will entertain a motion to place the city manager agenda item.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero against.
We're on to city manager agenda item number two. A communication transmitted from Louis, a deputy city manager, relative to a recommendation that in the first 2021 for the replacement of boilers at the Morse Elementary School located at 40 Granite Street. Counselor Nolan?
Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui, through you to the city manager. I am very excited about this request to the MSBA. The city and the district have been pretty successful for this kind of improvement and work at our many schools across the district, which has really helped us bring our schools up to current standards. My question would expect and hope, and if it's not in there already, would want it to be that this will be replacing as much as possible any fossil fuels, and that it will move, like the presentation from the city CDD Sustainability Team, that by then, we will have to be net zero, so we will certainly want this to be net zero. So, I don't know if, how that's going towards a fully fossil fuel-free, so I'm not sure if that's the case.
David, Jimmy?
Jimmy Maloney's on the line. He can talk about the specifics of the project, but clearly, this is the approval for the statement of interest. So, that obviously, as you know, gets us into the game if we're approved, and then basically, when we do the exploration investigation, those kinds of issues will be investigated. And Jimmy, I don't know if you have anything more to add?
No, I think what Mr. Kale said pretty much covers it. We fully intend to comply with all policies of the city. And this is our first step. It's a, it's a sort of a three-pronged step. This work actually wouldn't occur for at least two years.
Good to see you, Mr. Maloney. Thank you, Mr. Kale, and I, I'm glad to see it moving forward. I, I actually know that the MSBA obviously has, has, so if that hasn't been, been part of it, it might be good to include that that would be at least a possibility or an option that we're considering. I obviously hope this does move forward, and I hope.
The order?
On adopting the order, Counselor Carlo.
Yes.
Yes, Vice. Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sabrina Wheeler. Yes, Councilor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zandervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
Round to city manager agenda over city's watershed lands for water supply protection and conservation purposes. Councilor Zandervan, you have the floor.
Eight as well. I think they might be related, or do we want to keep them separate?
Clerk?
On the motion to suspend the rules to bring forward city manager agenda item number eight. Yes, Councilor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zandervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
Councilor Zandervan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Part of the reason I wanted to do these together is that we, we're simultaneously being asked to spend money to protect our watershed, which makes sense to me as a, as a conservation measure. Then we're also told that there is PFAS in our water, and there was a recent Boston Globe article that identified this as a widespread problem in. And it wasn't clear from the agenda item what the levels we are, that there really are no safe levels, that any amount of this stuff is, is really bad for our health. So I'm, I'm just curious about these problems with contamination, because we are sourcing that water from such a dense urban area, when we could be drinking relatively pristine water from the Quavon Reservoir instead. So if the staff could help us understand what the PFAS levels are that we are detecting in our water and, and what the goals are in terms of further lowering them.
I'll start, and then we can turn it over to Sam, but I want to make it clear, we are below any standard. We are in a good position. However, as you said, the more that we can do to make it safer, the more we will do. But I represent, Sam has rarely had, this is one of his top items for many years. So Sam, why don't you talk about, you know, how we've moved forward to make sure this is not an issue?
Parts per trillion for the combination of the six PFAS compounds, which is per and polyfluoroacyl substances. The, what we've gone, which, which the goal is to be below 10 parts per trillion of the six PFAS compounds, which is, again, some of the state we will, but the goal is below 10 parts per trillion. Right now, the action level is 20 parts per trillion for the combination of the six PFAS compounds.
Data, so just to make sure I heard you correctly, so we are currently between 12 and 17 parts per trillion?
Yes.
Thank you. And, and my understanding is that we're only testing for six of these compounds, but that there are
More than the six, but the six is the basis for the regulation. And the pilot study has been going on, it should be completed the end of June. You know, it looks like that was the granular activated carbon. And with that done, we should be able to, it seems pretty readily keep all the PFAS, the report is going to be coming out shortly, but we've had a close to an 80% removal on all the compounds that we've been testing for, which is very good seeing it. And then instead of letting it go, you know, like we have for 20 years, we will probably have to replace the granular activated carbon every, you know, say two or three years. So you know, that's, that's, that will be determined from, at the conclusion of the pilot testing. So it looks very, very promising. And we expect, we expect, sorry.
Go ahead.
We expect to have that done by the end of the calendar year, that will replace the filter media. I guess that's an important component, the state.
Councilor Zandervan?
Thank you.
I think we've just, you know, my reports, I just have the six, but I know we've been testing for at least nine, and it might even be 10 to 12.
What the levels are for MWRA water?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes, I believe it's around, you know.
Right off here where we would have to invest a lot of, of additional money to, just to get to the same level as MWRA, and, and obviously, these are not the only contaminants that we're concerned about. But I'll yield the floor this time. Thank you, Madam.
Councilor Nolan?
Siddiqui, I'm not sure if we're done with number seven. I had not pulled that. I had actually pulled number eight to ask some of the same questions that Councilor Zandervan had asked. And what I wanted to ask the, through you, Mayor Siddiqui, is I, I noticed on, I had looked up earlier today on the website, all the PFAS levels for the six compounds that you mentioned, and it, it has ranged and it has fluctuated a little bit. But it, it would be good perhaps if we are testing for more than that, to put that on the website, because then, then people will know, separating out the, the, the six that are required by the state. Do we think we could implement on a long-term basis? I understand from reading the water board minutes, I think from a couple of months ago, that it's also an additional expense that, that the water department would be taking on, right, that these get filled up?
The filter media is granular activated carbon, as I stated, you know, we would expect to get that replaced by the end of the calendar year. And the replace cycle in the filters, that gives you a really good indication, but obviously, as we replace the media and then monitor for those compounds, we will, we will, you know, specifically say two.
Yes. Seemed relatively high from the, from the minutes of the water board, and I'm really glad that we're.
The granular activated carbon, they take it above a temperature that will destroy or decompose the PFAS compounds. I think it's somewhere around.
Questions, Mr. Court, and that's exactly why we need to be doing this. Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui. I yield.
I don't see any other hands up, and for the record, I'll just read it. Received by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, drinking water program to the Public Investment Fund Water Extraordinary Expenditures of the ongoing Cambridge Water Department's Bunch Scale Study to determine the effectiveness of granular activated carbon to remove PFAS from our water. So what we can do, because there's no other hands, we will, Clerk Wilson, take seven and eight together and do a roll call, adopt the order. And then do a roll call on the appropriate.
Acquire land, and it requires two separate votes. So I don't think that it should be voted at the same time as, as order eight, unless the clerk disagrees.
You can take them separately.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, if I could. 1.7 that the city of Cambridge will be granting to the town of Lincoln after the city acquires the land for conservation purposes. So the diminution of the full disposition process is an order that should be taken first. And then the, or, I'm sorry, that would be in the case of a, sorry, it can be taken after the order to approve the acquisition. The separate votes from order.
Yes.
Eight, thank you.
Through you, Mayor Siddiqui. So we're going to read seven C first, and then we'll go to seven point D. And so the order that the council will be voting on first would be pursuant to section 2.1, 10.010G of the Cambridge Municipal Code, the city council, that will protect approximately eight acres of land comprised of two parcels in the city's watershed to be acquired by the city and the town of Lincoln. And just to be clear, Madam Simmons, are you saying that we can or cannot take that one first?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes, you can take that one first. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can you say a little bit more about exactly what we are doing with this land? And whether it can be of benefit to the residents of Cambridge in any way besides the watershed protection purpose?
I will, through you, Madam Mayor, I will take a crack at the first part of that. But then I would hope that Mr. Court could answer the remainder as to what the city will do with the property. Under the special legislation that was passed over 100 years ago or more at this point, to acquire watershed property in other municipalities, it's for the limited purposes of watershed and conservation. So although this could be used for other conservation purposes, would you further answer that question?
Yes, the, the major benefit of acquiring the real estate is for watershed protection, such that implies that it's in a protection area, the zone A is defined as 400 feet from the water body itself, or 200 feet from a stream or river going into that water, and so developable. So this is, that is the, the specific and significant benefit of purchasing the real estate. As Ms. Gloa had said, you can't, you know, we have used some other properties that we've purchased in the, in the watershed to have trails and walking paths. And, and we do promote that for, for anyone, as well as obviously specifically for Cambridge residents, if they so wish to do so.
Councilor Zandervan? You all set?
Yeah.
Okay, Clerk Wilson, you can proceed with the, the roll calls.
On that motion. And again, this is the order in seven C.
It's seven A, right? There's no seven C.
It's in the packet on page 42, it's, it's designated as set C, 42, and it's, it's a attachment 1.7.2. So seven A. Councilor Carlo. Yes, Councilor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zandervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
See, there are actually two separate orders. One is to acquire the property, and the other is to actually dispose of the easement interest. Now that the vote to diminish the full disposition process has been taken.
So, yeah, so the next item is, again, it's identified in the packet as 1.7.2, it's agenda item, so number seven B, it's got two ordered paragraphs, I'll read both ordered paragraphs, that the city council hereby authorizes the city manager to purchase the property on behalf of the city of Cambridge for water supply protection and conservation purposes from previously appropriated funds and to execute, to execute any and all necessary documents on behalf of the city to effectuate this purpose in such form and substance as the city man, terms Cambridge Municipal Code and other applicable laws, hereby authorizing the city manager to grant on behalf of the city of Cambridge a permanent conservation restrict, protection and conservation, and to execute and deliver such, such conservation restriction in such form and substance as the city manager determined is necessary or advisable. On that motion. Oh, I'm sorry, on that order. Councilor Carlo.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zandervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
Mr. City Clerk, Madam Mayor. I just, Mr. Clerk, I just want to, that order has been adopted, as well as the last two that you just read. I just want to make sure there are three orders that need to be approved, and I think we've only done two.
Agenda item submitted, one is seven A and one is seven B. Seven B contains two orders, the vote, the council voted to adopt seven B, which contains the two orders.
Okay.
All right, we're, we're done with number seven. So we can go on to the appropriation for number eight.
On number eight. Or she's the city manager agenda number eight. Which is the, just because we've been through a lot of votes, I'll just read the Councilor Carlo.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Simmons. Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
We're on to city manager agenda item number nine, transmitting communication from Louis Adipisqali, city manager, relative to the appropriate $5,000 to the grant fund human services, other ordinary maintenance account, which will be used to provide nutritious meals to Cambridge U that 22 sites throughout the city during the summer months when schools are closed. Vice Mayor Mallon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to the city manager and assistant city manager, Semenov. There has been a lot of conversation and anxiety around the summer food program and what will happen this summer. I know we have been providing continuous service since March 16th of last year. There hasn't been a day that has been missed, which is really amazing, if you think about it. But I, I know that there has been some anxiety in the, in the community around those 22 sites, where they're going to be, how they're going to operate, and where will those sites be located? I'm assuming that's open and closed sites, that 22 sites.
Through you, Madam Mayor, that's correct, and pick up on the following Monday. Right now, we're still working with the schools around a few logistics, but our plan is to operate at all of the school sites where the schools have been operating. And we will be operating both open sites for any member of the community to come to pick up a meal, as was true last summer, because we have waivers from the federal requirements that a child needs to pick up the child's own meal. Families can come pick up meals for their children, or children can come and pick up meals. We will also be providing meals to all of the programs that operate in the schools that wish to be receiving meals. And again, because of the waiver, unlike the way the traditional summer food program operates, the meals are available to every program site, not only those that serve a majority of low-income children who are eligible. So all of the programs that wish to be receiving food within the schools, whether they're community programs or school programs or city programs, will be able to get breakfast and lunch. And we will also be operating those sites as walk-up sites, so that members of the community who are not engaged in a program in a school can still come and receive lunch. Lunch and breakfast together. And in addition to that, as we had done the summer before last, we will be working with the book bike program and providing dinners two nights a week at different housing developments, so that we provide the dinner along with the distribution of the books. And it is our current expectation that as the basketball leagues reopen this summer, both in North Cambridge, at the Moses Youth Center and at Hoyt Field, we will again operate the evening meal program. Those aren't funded by the federal government, those have been funded directly by the city.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, I'm glad to hear that the dinner programs are back on track this summer. I know we worked really hard to get those up and running a couple of summers ago, and I know that they were really successful. In terms of the open sites, I know we've had a very successful enlarged site at the Fresh Pond Apartments since last March. Will that continue throughout the summer?
Yes, it will.
Great. Another, through you, Madam Mayor, another concern that I've heard raised around the summer meal sites is whether or not the flyers will be translated into multiple languages, and how those will be disseminated out into the, the student population.
Through you, Madam Mayor, I, the answer is yes, they will be translated. And I have to confess, I don't know the answer to how they'll be distributed, but I know it's a high priority for the staff to ensure that there's adequate information available in multiple languages to families.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, I think I had heard the concern from a, a family liaison, so I'm assuming that would be then, one of the networks to get those translated flyers out to. My last question is on a vendor. Has the city chosen a vendor? I knew we used a different vendor last summer, and I think that one was kind of a last-minute vendor choice, but turned out okay?
Yes, the bid process has been concluded by the city, and the successful bidder is the same bidder as last summer. And I think that the report on the food was extremely favorable last summer. And so, and we've made a few changes that really are just to support our logistics that they were able to comply with as a part of the bid. So they were again the successful bidder, and we're very happy to be working with them.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, I'm, I'm happy that they are going to be back this summer. I think it was a really, a good addition. It was one of those last-minute things. It was one of those last minute things that turned out to be kismet, and I'm glad to see it back um them back this summer. So um I look forward to uh. Visiting some sites this summer and and seeing the program up and running again and and many more sites, and thanks to your team for for putting this together. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Nolan.
Thank you. I so appreciate the city's work on this through you, Mayor Siddiqui, and also to the Vice Mayor for her. Dead fast work twenty-four seven on on food insecurity issues. I um am just wondering uh whether some of the ways that we are working with, there's so many more urban farming, there's city sprouts, there's ways that people are trying to provide food within the city for some of our. Um, population. I recognize this is a massive program that um is not, we're not yet at the point where we have enough farms throughout Cambridge to supply it, but I'm just curious as to whether any of this funding could possibly go to that kind of. Uh, ways that some of the community is trying to address food insecurity by providing an opportunity for um for folks within Cambridge to uh grow their own food.
Um, through you, Madam Mayor, um, Counselor Nolan, it's a really interesting idea, and um I have to confess, I've never thought about it that way. Um, there are some incredibly challenging logistical issues that come with running a program. Um, that's this massive, and so seems pretty clear to me that we couldn't figure out a way to do anything this summer. But it's a really interesting idea that I'll bring back to staff to think about whether um when we're. I mean, I hope in some ways the federal government will continue some of the ways in which they've changed the program requirements. For next summer, but when we're back in a somewhat more normal environment, um, we could take a look at what are some of the possibilities here. Thank you.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes, and thank you. I ask because some of what there there's a a group out in Holyoke that works with immigrant communities, so they can provide food also that they're growing, that is much more like the food that they came from their home. Their their home base, that that's the kind of um sensitivity to to providing if we can as much fresh food uh to our population in a way that is is uh. Obviously providing the healthy food and also providing an opportunity for us to marry some of our other goals, and I I I recognize this is an incredible lift that you're doing, and we are also grateful. That this is going to ensure that people will be getting food throughout the city through the summer, so I wanted to um ask you that. Um, if we can work on it in the future, that would be fantastic. Thank you. I yield Mayor Siddiqui.
I don't see any hands up, so we can do a roll call on the appropriation.
On that motion, Counselor Carlo.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselors Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Tumi.
Yes.
Yes, Counselors Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
We are on to city manager agenda item number thirteen, transmitting communication from Louis A. De Piscali, city manager. Relative to the appropriation of the emergency solutions grant from the Office of the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. An amount of two hundred twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. For the grant fund human services salary and wages account. And to the other ordinary maintenance account, which will be used for shelter operating costs, providing essential services to homeless persons outside. The shelter setting, rapid rehousing and homelessness prevention case management, short and medium term rental assistance and financial. Assistance needed to gain or retain permanent housing. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler, you have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Through you, I'm glad to see this uh on the agenda. Um, I just had a a brief question, and that was. Uh, asking about the uh rapid rehousing and the essential services to homeless persons outside of a shelter and. Could staff just talk a little bit more about those um services and you know who the program providers are?
Um, through you, Madam Mayor, um, thank you for the question. Um, so that um, this is actually, the funding for that piece is relatively small. It's about seventy-two thousand dollars and the funding goes to Home Start. Um, which um has staff located at the multi-service center and um. The requirements for this funding are that individuals be at below thirty percent of median income and it is, there is. Some rental assistance, frankly, less than the amount that the city. Has otherwise through the multi-service center. Um, but so we use both the um. Federal funding that we get here as well as funding from the multi-service center to support this, so it supports. A relatively, a slice of the community um in terms of. The overall picture of who we're able to help um access housing. The primary purpose of this funding is actually to provide some supports. To um shelters, and so most of the rest of this funding goes directly to the individual individual shelters. Within the city of Cambridge to provide operational support, but um we're allowed to use a small amount of this funding, which is what we do. To continue to support rehousing, and it's meant for rehousing for individuals. Low income individuals at high risk of losing the housing. This funding is not required to be just for individuals leaving homelessness. As opposed to low income individuals whose housing has become unstable.
Counselor Zondervan. Uh, you're muted, Counselor.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for that additional detail. Um, that's all the questions I had for now, so go ahead and yield back.
Counselor Zondervan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, through you, it's. Uh, obviously great that we're able to get this type of grant funding. Um. But I do worry about. You know, how. Stable is that because. You know, i- if if we're relying on grants, we may get them, we may not, and if we don't get them, then people go homeless, so. How how do we balance that um financial risk, if you will?
Um, through you, Madam Mayor, it's a great question. I would say that um. We, there are um several funding sources that we have, which are housing related. Which the city has been able to get for. In excess of, I mean, I'm guessing it's twenty years, but it's certainly in excess of ten years. And um the funding which we're um going to be discussing later, that the five point eight million dollars funding, although that's grown. That's funding that we've been getting from HUD for a very long time. It is always possible that um federal leadership. Um, or congressional changes could cause um the federal government to change. Um, its decision about funding, but I would say we have managed through a uh significant number of both Republican and Democratic administrations. Who were hostile or less hostile towards funding, and so some of these funding sources. Have been fairly stable and we assume at the moment that that funding would be continued, but I would say that we have been. Very successful working with the city manager and the city council where we have identified um funding gaps. Um, it's usually not because we've lost the grant funding, but we have been successful. In being able to continue to build, I think, you know, the um budget for this year included some significant increases. In legal services, in rental assistance items, which we didn't get new federal grants for, and we were able to continue to expand. Using city dollars for that purpose.
Counselor Donovan.
Okay, thank you. I love it.
I've seen no other hands. We can do a roll call on the appropriation.
On the appropriation, Counselor Carlo.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Tumi.
Yes.
Yes, Counselors Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
We're on to city manager agenda item fourteen. Transmitting communication from Louis A. De Piscali, city manager, relative to the appropriation of new Department of Housing. And Community Development Funds for the Y W C A Family Shelter in the amount of four thousand dollars. To the Grant Fund Human Service Programs Other Ordinary Maintenance Account, which will be subcontracted to the Cambridge Y W C A. Counselor, uh, Zondervan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, um, so another grant, and this one. Seems like a small amount, you know, compared to the the challenges that we're, the amount of funding that we're utilizing. Um, but can you say a little bit more about exactly how we're using this particular grant?
Um, uh, through you, Madam Mayor, um, I uh recognize that it's a little bit odd, but when we receive additional state funding. The only way for us to be able to spend that funding is for us to bring it to the city council for appropriation. The um. Grant that we receive annually and have for, again, I'm guessing it's about. Twenty years is to support the um family shelter at the Y W C A known as Renee's Place. The city built that brand new building over. Uh, renovated, rather, um, the brand new building on Clifton Street. Um. Clinton Street, sorry. Um, we have, I think the number is six hundred and eighty thousand is what we've already appropriated this year. We immediately turn around and contract with the Y W C A for all of that funding. Um, but in addition, there was some extra money that the Department of Housing and Community Development had, and they reached out to the various shelters. Um, and the purpose of that funding was to support um homework help or other services for children. And so we reached out to the Y to find out whether they could use the money, and so we worked with them to apply for the money, and so that's the four thousand. But that four thousand is really on top of what I believe is, I think it's six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars that. Funds the support of the Y W C A Family Shelter.
Counselor Zondervan.
Got it. Thank you. I love it.
I don't see any further questions on this, so we can do a roll call on the appropriation.
On the appropriation, Counselor Carlo.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Tumi.
Yes.
Yes, Counselors Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
We're on to city manager agenda item number fifteen, transmitting communication from Louis A. De Piscali, city manager, relative to the appropriation of five billion eight hundred. Fifty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars received from the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. The Grant Fund Human Services Salary and Wages Account. Which will be used to contract with homeless service providers and cover the costs related to serving homeless persons in Cambridge. This was brought by Counselors Zondervan. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, um, so I I have a couple of questions about specific programs, the representative P program. And the Green Street Shelter. Um, I I don't know if you can help us understand, are are those receiving any funding and and what other. Specific programs are being funded through this grant?
Um, through you, Madam Mayor, um, neither of those programs um are funded through this grant, and this was a year. This is an annual grant. Um, for which we apply on behalf of um the um various service providers. Most of this money, but not all, and I can happily explain, goes towards permanent supported housing, so it's units that are um made available to individuals who are chronically homeless. And the supportive services um that they are entitled to receive in those units. This year, um, we were, um, there was not the same process that is normally. Followed because of the pandemic. HUD did not open up the process for us to um change the way um. We apply for funds, so all of the projects that are funded are projects that were funded previously. Um, but what I would say is typically, unless a project was not performing. Um, we wouldn't be pulling the funding from a project that's supporting individuals in their housing, so under this. Proposal, for example, the largest recipients of funding, Home Start, which supports about seventy-seven units using this funding. Of permanent supported housing, so they both um and. Um, so they both help people find the units, then support them once they're in the units. There is turnover annually in some of these units, but most of these units have people who have been living there for a significant amount of time, and when they turn over, then it's the responsibility. To help support a new person, both to access the unit and and stay there, so Home Start gets the largest share of this money heading home. Um, supports about sixty units of housing with this transition house gets about a half a million dollars, which supports um. Uh, two different projects that they have AIDS Action, um, supports about twenty units with the funding that they receive. Justice Start um has a rapid rehousing project they that they support with this. Um, Bay Cove gets a small amount of money for five units that they support over at the Y M C A. Um. There's funding here um for youth homelessness, um, and that's funding which is supported through AIDS Action for Youth on Fire. And in addition, the other piece of funding here is um for um. The housing, um, some of the housing search services, street outreach, um Elliot Mental Health Services gets funding. Um, Bay Cove gets funding for First Step for their street outreach. Um. And that helps support the coordinated intake system, which. Helps ensure that the individuals who have been um homeless for a very long time get access to the units. Um, that become available.
Counselor Zondervan.
Thank you, um, Madam Mayor, through you. So do we have any um plans or or insights into the Green Street Shelter? Um, particularly given that, you know, with the eviction moratorium expiring. Um, there's some concern that we might see a lot more evictions, so. And anything that we can do there to support that program?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, um, we're engaged in um conversations with um both the Green Street Shelter. Um, and with D H C D about the future um of that site and um expect that at some point we will. Before too long, be able to come back and share um where we are.
Counselor.
Thank you. I love it.
I don't see any further questions on this one, so we can do a roll call on the appropriation.
On that motion, Counselor Carlo.
Yes, yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Tumi.
Yes.
Yes, Counselors Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
We now move on to the calendar. We have two charter in items. Um, we have to pull. I think. There's a few unfinished business items. Um, six, seven. Um, eight, nine, that we'll have to act on, but first we can go to the charter in items. Um, go ahead.
If I may, um, the um, so seven, I I think you mentioned seven, did you mention seven, eight, nine on the um?
Yes.
Those items should be adopted um with the budget for June seventh, so while their publication has has passed and they could be adopted, you should wait until the following year.
Got it. Okay, so we're really, um, there's nothing that we're going to be acting on under unfinished business. So we can go to the the charter right. Um, we, before I begin, I just. Want to start off by saying that um I think myself and the whole co- council appreciates all the testimony given last night. During public comment, the the seven hours of testimony from residents in Cambridge and neighboring cities uh. Last night, you know, really highlights the complexity and emotion to tie to what's happening right now. Um, in Palestine and Israel and what has happened, so we have two charter in items, and for those watching, the policy order. Uh, one fourteen is not before us currently. We will get to that order when we get to the policy orders uh on the agenda. We will first go to the resolution um that uh is before us, uh that was sponsored by myself, Vice Mayor Mallon. And Counselor McGovern, uh, which is titled. Vice Mayor Mallon, and Counselor McGovern, which is titled, "The Palestinian Children and Families Act." So we will first go to Counselor Nolan, who exercised her charter right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui. I exercised my charter right on this item since we had members of our community indicate that it was difficult for them to talk about it, and it was an item of importance to them. It was a Jewish holiday called Shavuot. I charterited it, and I would be happy to defer to you as the motion maker on this resolution in order to speak about it.
Thank you, Counselor Nolan, and I appreciate, you know, why, the reason behind your charter right, and I agree with it. I will say that, you know, for the record, for those who don't, who know, don't know, watching, the City Council passes resolutions to go on record to support items that members of Congress sponsor. And Congresswoman Presley is a sponsor of this House resolution, which is available online at mccollumhouse.gov. It was introduced by Congresswoman Betty McCollum on April fifteenth, 2021 of this year. After we talk about this, I suggest we, what we can do is just vote this up and down, and then we can get to Policy Order One or Nine. Understand that there is potential substitute language, so we can do this one by one. So going back to this resolution, it's titled, "To Promote and Protect the Human Rights of Palestinians Living Under Israeli Military Occupation and to Ensure That the United States' Taxpayer Funds Are Not Used by the Government of Israel to Support the Military Detention of Palestinian Children and the Unlawful Seizure, Appropriation, and Destruction of Palestinian Property and Forceable Transfer of Civilians in the West Bank or Further Annexation of Palestinian Land in Violation of International Law." So for me, I think what's happening currently and what has happened, there's a lot of context. I think for us watching from afar, seeing the growing number of deaths, many of whom are children, I think it is really important we talk about it. And I appreciate Congresswoman Presley, who's really spoken eloquently about this and is raising awareness about this resolution, that the goal of which is to enhance transparency and accountability. It would require the Department of State to either certify that no U.S. funds were being used for prohibited purposes or, and issuing a report to Congress detailing violations of human rights by the government of Israel. I think it's really clear that we have to take a stand when U.S. assistance for any country's security is being used to violate rights, especially the rights of Palestinian children, to demolish family homes and annex Palestinian lands. And I do want to make it clear, some of these issues have become, there's a lot of confliction in this discussion. You know, I think for me, the reading of this resolution is about that funding that's provided by the U.S. government to create some of the conditions that are happening. And, you know, I think we can advocate for Palestinians and also condemn antisemitism in the same breath. As we've heard last night, we are seeing both a rise in antisemitic attacks and Islamophobia. We have to commit ourselves, if we are to commit ourselves as advocates for peace, we have to call out hate in any form we see through this international crisis. So I won't go on about the resolution. I think what's written is fairly measured and factual. The bill is available online. I think we, as a city, have a long history of standing in solidarity and in support of promoting and protecting human rights around the country. And so this resolution asks the City Council to go on record in support of this resolution and urge the entire congressional delegation to support it. And it then asks to send a copy of this resolution to the delegation. And I understand for some, this doesn't go far enough. For me, though, I think talking about what is happening there and the human rights violations is really important. And last year, year before, five years before, you know, we have not been talking about the actions of the government of Israel. And I think that is important to say. So that's what the resolution is about. I can go to any of the hands up. There's Counselors Zondervan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for putting this on our agenda. And thank you to Congresswoman Anna Presley for putting this resolution forward in Congress. It's really important that we stand with the Palestinian people in this struggle at this time, and I really appreciate the Congresswoman for doing that and appreciate you for putting this forward on our agenda. I think it is important for us to affirm our congressional policy approach and then as well, as we are about to do, decide what we want to do about this issue locally. So I fully support this resolution, and again, thank you for bringing it forward.
Any further discussion? I don't see any hands up, so I suggest we can do a roll call on the resolution.
On adopting the resolution, Counselor Carlo.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselors Zondervan.
Yeah?
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
We now move on to Policy Order Number Nine. This was chartered in by Counselor Nolan, and the order is as follows, that the City Manager, being hereby, is requested to work with the Purchasing Department to review Cambridge's corporate contracts and identify any companies that are in violation of Cambridge's policy on discrimination, including, but not limited to, Hewitt Packard Enterprise and Hewitt Packard Incorporated over their role in embedding apartheid in the Middle East, and to suggest alternatives for Cambridge to explore in order to ensure that the city embodies the values it put on paper. Be it further ordered that the City Manager, being hereby, is requested to report back to the Council on this matter as soon as possible. The charter right was exercised by Counselor Nolan. Counselor Nolan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui. As we've all seen, this week has been challenging for so many of us in our community, as well as in the world. I exercise my charter right just to remind people out of respect for the community and for democracy, to ensure that people could speak on this, which they did last night. I know many of my colleagues would have done the same thing in the spirit of inclusivity. And I also want to acknowledge and thank, as you did, Mayor Siddiqui, all the people who spoke last night, and also the two hundred and fifty Canterburyans who wanted to speak up and declined and instead signed a joint letter urging us to reject the policy order, saving us four hours of testimony last night, even at one minute each. I have learned a lot these past two weeks. I have spoken to people in favor and opposed to BDS. I've had some uncomfortable and deep conversations with people who are upset that I do not support the resolution as presented and do not support BDS. I spent some time looking into our foreign aid. It turns out the top countries we fund include countries with serious human rights violations, Egypt, Ethiopia, Yemen, Syria. And I read Amnesty International's most recent report on Israel, which cites human rights violations, and they cite Palestine as well. I also learned we have no contracts with HP, and HP has said they don't do the work others say they do. I learned many people had no idea we have no HP contracts. The passionate and heartfelt testimonies from Cambridge residents urging us to vote down BDS moved me, as did the testimony of those urging a yes vote. I heard the conviction that we must do something for justice for Palestinians, and I heard the fear of Jews with experience of antisemitism right here in our city. I reject the notion that the only path to seeking justice for Palestinians is BDS. There are other coalitions working for justice and peace that are not as divisive. Some residents who wrote to us succinctly summed up some important points for me, which I will read quotes. While I will not get into the discussion as to whether or not criticism of Israel's practices is equivalent to antisemitism, singling out Israel for criticism encourages the antisemites in our midst, in the same way that blaming China for the COVID-19 pandemic encouraged anti-Asian racism. And another, why single out Israel? It may not be antisemitic, but it is anti-Israeli, which ends up enabling antisemitism. And another, if deaths in governments with U.S. ties are the rationale for the Council taking action, why has there been silence on the thousands of deaths this year in Tigray? A young friend in medical school here wrote to me shocked to wake up last week to antisemitic posts in her social media, online incidents equivalent to the many physical antisemitic attacks exploding in our country, which we all decry. She wrote to me at length, noting appreciatively that her medical training includes education on systemic racism and implicit bias. And she asked, how can anyone work so hard to dismantle systemic racism while simultaneously creating and implementing systemically racist policies against Jews? Our identity is unchangeable. Jews must be included in our activism. And of course, not all Jews are white. We must ensure in discussions that we do not erase Jews of color. I am part of Boston Worker Circle. I was on the board for six years and currently serve on two committees. That community is known for radical leftist views. We do not take a stand on BDS, even as we support the right to boycott. We live with a range of views, work for peace, seek to heal divisions, engage in dialogue. I hope our city will do the same. The issue is complex, and it's divisive. The history, we can't even begin to discuss in even a seven-hour meeting. The policy order as written does single out one country, and it is a proxy for BDS. We've heard that all over from every side. I believe we can stand for justice and oppose BDS. And I am aware that BDS, per se, does not necessarily advocate for erasing Israel, yet many of the leaders do. The advocacy for this specific policy order erased Israel entirely, and most BDS material and rhetoric point to one state solution that is only Palestine. I believe we must stand up for all people, and in my view, that means rejecting this policy order. And before I end, I will add that I hope the hundreds who came forth will work and advocate for programs like the HART program, which we will be discussing later tonight, for high-quality summer programs, for meaningful action on environmental justice, for municipal broadband, for universal pre-K. Those are also really important issues that we need to discuss. If we care about human rights, let's find out what ties we have to any company or country that may violate our own policies. We have a very strong anti-discrimination policy. Let's base all decisions on that. I am proposing, having worked right up to the last minute with two of my colleagues, Counselors McGovern and Simmons, and we apologize for not sending it earlier. We were really trying to figure out an appropriate substitute based on the very heart-rendering testimony on all sides last night, so we didn't get a chance to send it to the clerk until very recently, right before the meeting. I deeply regret the divisiveness that this entire debate has caused, and I hope we can move beyond it. If the clerk could read the entire substitute policy order, I think that would be appreciated. I yield to Mayor Siddiqui.
Rick Wilson?
What? So leave its values and promote best practices.
Rick Wilson, you're cutting in and out.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
The policy order reads as follows. Whereas Cambridge aims to live its values and promote best practices and ethical behavior among the contractors and companies that do business with the city, and whereas the international stage on which Cambridge's universities, residents, and corporations act means that our city takes on a range of issues beyond the usual ones expected of a municipality, and has consistently tried to support vulnerable individuals and communities in their struggle against oppression, persecution, and violence. And whereas the City Council condemns the violence that is currently and has historically taken place between the Israeli government and Hamas, and that we mourn the deaths of innocent Palestinians and Israelis who have been the victims of this violence. And whereas, the City Council believes that it is possible and appropriate to condemn the actions and policies of a government or governments without being critical of those who reside within those countries, and critique of the Israeli and/or the Hamas governments should not be seen as condemning the Israeli or Palestinian people. And whereas, the City Council affirms Israel's right to exist and to defend its citizens from attacks such as those launched by Hamas by the City Council also, but the City Council also recognizes that the Netanyahu government has directed unconscionable destructive attacks against the Palestinian people, and our community should not be willing to play even a minor role in allowing these actions to continue. And whereas, the City Council recognizes that violence and suffering is happening around the world, in Israel as well as other countries, and whereas Cambridge has financially, has financial and political relationships with hundreds of companies around the globe, and there currently exists no review process to determine whether the practices of those entities comply with Cambridge's stated policies and values, or whether their products are used to perpetuate human rights violations. And whereas Cambridge's policy on discrimination states, quote, "Any practice that by design or effect discriminates against individuals because of race, color, sex, age, religious creed, disability, national origin, or ancestry, sexual orientation, gender, marital status, family status, military status, or source of income is of public concern. As such, discrimination can create strife, hostility, and unrest, threatens or impairs the rights and privileges of individuals, and deprives individuals of the benefits of a free and open society. Now therefore be it ordered that the City Manager, being hereby, is requested to work with the Purchasing Department to review Cambridge's corporate contracts and purchases to identify any vendor or any vendors or manufacturers that are in violation of Cambridge's policy on discrimination, and be it further ordered that the City Manager, being hereby, is requested to report back to the Council on this matter as soon as possible."
Counselor Nolan? Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui. I believe this is a policy order that's very strong in standing up for the violence that we've seen, and I look forward to my colleagues' discussions about it. As I say, I am grateful to Counselors McGovern and Counselor Simmons, who had some past prior history discussing some of this, and that is why we decided to work together on presenting something we are hoping will unite our community. We've seen a lot of divisiveness, and we're really hoping this is something can bring us all together and it can pass this unanimously.
Okay, so I'm going to go and look at the hands that are raised. Counselors Zondervan, Counselor McGovern, Counselor Simmons, and then Counselor Sabrina Wheeler. And I know that everyone has a lot to say on this, and I ask that we all really listen and respect one another. Please do not engage in personalities. Go through me. And, you know, that's all I'll say, but really, please. I know there's strong opinions on all this, but our role as a body is to work together to listen and disagree, and that's okay, but please do so in a manner that allows me to chair the meeting well. So we will go to Counselor Zondervan and then Counselor McGovern.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you, to my colleagues and members of the public. I will start by saying that I am disappointed that we are once again faced with a substitute order that we didn't see until very recently, and I understand that my colleagues felt it necessary to work on it until the last minute. I appreciate and understand that. But I am disappointed by this substitute order being introduced at the last minute once again. And we have heard from many, many people on public comment, in our emails, and many Jewish and Palestinian people who are in support of the original order. And many of the people who identified as Palestinian in public comment. And many of the people who identified as Palestinian in public comment were, gave addresses in Cambridge Public Housing. Because we are welcoming city and we provide a lot of affordable housing and, and refuge for immigrants from all over the world. And we heard about families being split in half by Israeli apartheid. Someone told us that every time they go back to visit their family in Palestine, they notice that their family members are squeezed into smaller and smaller spaces. Someone told us they still have the key to their family's original home in Israel, but they cannot return there because they're not Jewish. A black woman told us that when she was on a trip with Harvard University, Israeli soldiers pointed guns at them and told them that only Jewish students could walk down the street. We heard twice from someone whose friend woke up on their birthday to learn that Israel had killed 23 family members in Gaza. We heard from Muslim community members who said she watched in horror as the holy site of Al-Aqsa was raided by Israeli forces. Another Muslim community member said that this was the most horrific month of Ramadan that she had witnessed in her entire life. And we heard from a physician who talked about how Palestinians are denied access to medical care and called the proposal one response to the humanity, the inhumanity of Israel's treatment of Palestinians. John Russell pointed out that black leaders and activists from Andrew Davis to Toni Morrison have supported Palestinian rights in solidarity, recognizing that black folks in America suffer the indignities of the police whilst Palestinians suffer the indignities of Israeli apartheid. And we heard from activists like Carolyn Hunter, who led the original Polaroid boycott many years ago, which led to the company's eventual disinvestment in South African apartheid. They told us the arguments against this echoed the arguments they heard back then. Why single out only South African democracy? Why not the Soviet Union? And we heard from a Jewish person who reminded us that anti Zionism is not the same as antisemitism and that it is incredibly dangerous to assert that this is so. We heard from a rabbi who told us that boycotts are an essential strategy for nonviolent resistance and that Cambridge should be proud to have this opportunity to uplift all people. We heard from another Jewish person who expressed concern that calling BDS antisemitic creates a dangerous inflation between the actions of the Israeli state and all people. And we heard from a Jewish resident that she felt traumatized by the lies and disinformation from opponents of BDS. And we heard from Jewish organizations who support the measure. And we heard from Jewish organizations who opposed it. And every time that we try to stand up for people who are suffering injustice, we are told that it's divisive to bring it up. And that people feel uncomfortable even discussing it. It's very similar to the white fragility that we see in the United States when we try to discuss racism and racial inequality. The parallels between the black liberation struggle in the United States and the Palestinian liberation struggle in Israel are clear. And many people who testified over the last two days pointed this out and asked us to support the HART program as well in solidarity with.
It's not before us right now. So please bring it back to the, your, your, the policy order that you've sponsored. Don't, we have, we can't have 20 minutes per person, so please bring it back to the, the issue at hand.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And not surprisingly, considering the AJC, the JCRC, the ADL, the IAC action orders about this meeting instructed opponents not to spend too much time focusing on the situation in Israel. Boycotts do not undermine coexistence, they make coexistence possible. We have seen that throughout the history of the struggles for justice from Cesar Chavez, Rosa Parks, Nelson Mandela, Mahatma Gandhi, and on. Both antisemitism and Israeli apartheid are rooted in racism. And we must cite both to secure Palestinian and Jewish safety. We saw a video just this afternoon showing a Palestinian teen, Jana Kishwani, being shot in the back in her home in Sheikh Jarrah with a sponge bullet. This is not the kind of treatment that we expect from our allies. It is really important that we make a strong and clear statement that the Palestinian people are suffering disproportionately in this conflict at the hands of an oppressive state. That's what the original order made clear. And whatever order we pass tonight needs to affirm that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Next up, we have Councillor McGovern, followed by Councillor Simmons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to start by saying that last night we heard some of the most emotional and powerful public comment we've ever heard. Both from those who have loved ones impacted by the actions of the Israeli government and by those who continue to live in fear of antisemitic attacks, sadly even here in Cambridge. And I want to express my sadness and support to anyone experiencing this physical and emotional violence. I also want to condemn the violence that has recently and historically taken place between Israel and Hamas. No matter where you stand on this issue, no matter who you feel is at fault or the aggressor, I hope we can agree that the loss of any innocent life, whether Palestinian or Israeli, is tragic. Regarding this policy order, one of the things I find troubling, the, I'm sorry, the original policy order, one of the things that I find troubling is that it's not transparent. Nowhere in this order doesn't mention endorsing BDS. But we all know that's what it's really about. So we're being asked to vote on one thing, evaluate in our contracts, when our vote will really mean something completely different. What the order asks for is that the city manager work with the purchasing department to determine if we are doing business with any companies that violate our discrimination policy, including but not limited to HP. I don't have a problem with that. If, for example, the city had a contract with a company that gave millions of dollars to anti LGBTQ organizations, I'd want to know and I'd want us to get out of that contract. But again, that is not what this order is about. It's all about making Cambridge one of the few cities in the country to support BDS. So let's talk about BDS for a moment. BDS is a large and complex movement. We heard some say that BDS does not call for the elimination of Israel, and we heard others say that it does. The truth is it's both. There are some, like the folks from Cambridge who support BDS, who I met with when I was mayor, who see boycotting as a way to put economic and political pressure on HP and other companies doing business with Israel. I never heard one of them saying that Israel shouldn't exist. But the BDS leadership does call for the eradication of Israel. Those statements have been made, they're out there, people can Google them and see them. And others that are part, and, and those statements were made by Barghouti and others. And that is part of the movement, the BDS movement that I don't agree with. And the way this policy order has been marketed, there is no way to separate the two. This isn't a simple boycott policy order. So although I believe in the right to boycott, I've certainly done it myself. I don't believe in the BDS movement as a whole, and I can't vote in favor of a policy order that will be used to endorse the BDS movement, even though that's not even what's in the order. My other concern is there hasn't been any attempt to bring people together. There hasn't been an attempt to build bridges, there hasn't been an attempt to listen to the pain and positions of each side. This has turned into whomever can get the most people to email or call into public comment wins. It has torn this community apart. If you support the order, you're antisemitic. If you don't support the order, you don't care about human rights. It is the exact divisiveness that we see on the national level. Imagine if instead of this policy order, we brought supporters of BDS, local rabbis and the ADL together to talk about what we can agree on and how we can be a model of unity on this issue before this policy order was filed. That would have been real leadership. Instead, we spent weeks discussing this divisive order that asked us to vote on something it doesn't really mean and has driven a wedge in our community. If we engaged in dialogue, I think most people in Cambridge would agree that the Israeli government, not the Israeli people, but the government, is doing things they shouldn't be doing. There's no question about that. No one wants homes bulldozed or water supplies cut off. I think most people would also agree that Israelis around the world and even here in Cambridge are justifiably fearful for their safety, given what they endure every day. But again, that was never the intent of the order. I also want to say that human rights issues in Israel and anywhere in the world are important, and I do think that we can and should speak out against these injustices. But we have spent two weeks and dozens of hours on this one policy order, and here we are in late May with no real plan to get all our kids into summer programs, facing a flood of evictions when the state of emergency is lifted, an increase in violence in our community, and how we're going to help struggling local businesses. This is not a simple policy order that we can just pass and move on. It has completely divided this community at a time when we have a lot on our plate. So people have been traumatized by this order, both those in support and those opposed. I believe people were being sincere when they talked about the impact of their loved ones in Palestine, as well as those who expressed feeling unsafe because of this order. Both of those things can be true. But instead of listening to one another and empathizing with one another, this policy order has furthered tensions and inflamed emotions. We could have handled this so much better, and I feel badly that everyone has been, to everyone, anyone who's been pained by these conversations. So although I believe the Israeli government is doing some horrible things, and I condemn those actions, I also believe that BDS as a national movement is complex, and there are parts of the movement I cannot condone. So I will not vote for the original order. Let's harness this energy, not to further victimize each other, but to bring the community together to be a model for conversation, understanding and peace. That's not what the original order does, and I wish it did. So I support the substitute. I want to thank Councillor Nolan for her leadership. I was happy to work on it because the substitute does what the original order said it intended to do. Look at our contracts, but it doesn't call for an endorsement of the broader BDS movement, which is problematic and which I do not support. So I hope we all vote in favor of the substitute order. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We'll go to Councillor Simmons and then Councillor Sabrina Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, let me just say I want to thank my colleague, Councillor Nolan, for introducing this amended language. And I hope our colleagues will know that we did work on this intently. And we're sorry, or I'm just going to say we're sorry. It was something that we couldn't help being able to get this to you before, but it's brought with the best of intentions. And, and I stand with Councillor Nolan and my colleague, Councillor McGovern, behind the substitute order. As I believe Councillor Nolan said, I was faced with a similar order when mayor. I believe that Councillor McGovern was, was had the same order introduced by BDS when he was mayor. And it feels very much like by all means necessary, we want to get the support from the council. It's almost like, it feels like a Trojan horse of sorts. But similar to the world of healthcare professionals, I believe that the guiding principle for elected officials should always be first, do no harm. And that's a measure that the city council failed to meet in this past week. In the Middle East, for centuries, fanaticism, zealotry and an unwillingness to compromise have inflamed hostilities and have turned neighbors into bitter enemies. And it will truly be a dark day in Cambridge if we allow fanaticism, zealotry and an unwillingness to compromise to take root here. The members of, of the council have a solemn responsibility. Not only to resist the urge to use the kind of rhetoric that can inflame and invoke the passions of our community and that can help turn the members of this community upon one another in a spirit of bitterness, anger and outrage. Based on the kinds of emails we received and the public comments given last week and last night, we so far failed to meet the moment. And so the people in this community, those who are Jewish, those who have personal ties to Palestine, those who have a deep understanding of the conflicts in the Middle East that stretch back to biblical times, and those who have more recently started becoming aware of these conflicts have been feeling various mixtures of anguish, outrage, grief and bitterness. And again, I come back to the fact that the members of this council have a responsibility to take all that energy and find a constructive way to lower the temperature in such a way that we do not all turn on one another and that we as a community can find a constructive path forward. So much of what I've heard during public comment confirms that the majority of people are talking at one another, but no one seems to be listening to one another. If we're going to be able to hold this conversation outside the context of these council meetings on this policy order, I know we'll find that there's a fair amount of common ground. I think we'd be hard pressed to find anyone among us that actually supports violence, bombings, rocket attacks, religious, racial or ethnic intolerance. I think we'd all start from a shared stance of wanting to condemn such things so that the bigger question for us is, how do we start to build off those shared values and create a shared holistic inclusive vision that we can all support? I believe that the substitute language offered by Councillor Nolan and supported by Councillor McGovern and I helps steer this conversation in the right direction. I believe it speaks to the essence of what the sponsors of the original policy order sought, but also seems to lower the level of anger and vitriol that has been bubbling up in our community this past week. I'm asking everyone in this community, everyone viewing this meeting to take a breath. Remember that in Cambridge, we take pride in the great diversity among us. We hope people not only from different ethnicities, different religious backgrounds, different generations, different life experiences, but also from different viewpoints. And I, we need to find a way to be able to tolerate those who do not think exactly as we do on every issue without turning upon one in a sum zero game. Instead of this community continuing being pitted against one another in a never ending game of I am completely right and you're completely wrong. We need to remember that one another's shared humanity and seek to build bridges of understanding, empathy and common purpose. For this reason, I will be voting in favor of the amended language. I hope all my colleagues will do likewise. Madam Mayor, I yield the floor.
We'll go to Councillor Sabrina Wheeler and then Councillor Karlo, followed by Vice Mayor Malin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I appreciate my colleagues and working to put together this amendment, but I don't think I can vote for the amendment because it tries to make this a both sides issue and doesn't make clear the power imbalance of the situation. And the resolution that we just passed didn't do this, and we didn't amend it to add that both sides language. And we've also heard that other proposals like affordable housing are too divisive for us to consider. And as the city council, we didn't accept those arguments. And I just want to make clear that I would have been happy to talk with councillors making this amendment about this order if they had reached out, but also appreciate that there's a lot else going on. And I do want to thank the councillors who have co-sponsored both this order and the councillors that put forward the resolution on the column bill. And I also want to thank all the community members who took time to make their voice heard. So much of what we do on the council is try to ensure fairness in government, address past and current systemic racism and prevent eviction and displacement. As Cambridge city councillors, that work is rightly focused mostly on Cambridge. But we've also weighed in this term on discrimination against transgender residents in other states. We condemn the actions of the federal government under President Trump, and we've stood in solidarity with residents of other countries when they face oppression. In particular, in thinking of the measure the city council passed this term, condemning the government of India for discriminating against Muslims and asking our congressional delegation to apply pressure on the Indian government to change their policy. As an Indian American myself, I was glad to co-sponsor and vote for that. And there are unfortunately many parallels between the Modi government's discrimination against Muslims in India and the Netanyahu government's discrimination against Muslims in Israel. Given that this body has worked to combat racism, evictions and state violence in Cambridge and beyond, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how I could avoid doing so in this case. And given the history of our country's bilateral relationship, I think it's especially important to do so here. As Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley has said, "We cannot remain silent when our government sends $3.8 billion of military aid to Israel that is used to demolish Palestinian homes, imprison Palestinian children and displace Palestinian families." While the City of Cambridge doesn't have direct authority over military aid, we do have authority over city contracts with companies that help underpin the occupation and violence against Palestinians, which is why we're considering this policy order tonight. I think it's important to recognize the structural imbalance that exists when one side in the conflict is an internationally recognized state with its own military, nuclear weapons and billions of dollars in US military assistance. We see this imbalance in the death toll where hundreds more Palestinians, including many children, have died in the past few weeks. We've got a banner on City Hall that says Black Lives Matter because we recognize it's important to name those whose lives are most threatened in the case of a disproportionate power imbalance. And in fact, the movement for Black Lives itself is clear that, "The fight for Palestinian rights and dignity is integral to the fight for human rights everywhere." As one of the US Senate's few Jewish members said recently, "Now is the time to state unequivocally that Palestinian lives matter." This policy order is a chance to do that, and I hope we can move forward with it tonight.
We'll go to Counselor Carlo and then we'll go to Vice Mayor Malin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is obviously a very emotional discussion we're having, and we all come with knowledge that we've learned from reading or the way we've been brought up. And I fully believe we all care about all sides. So four or five years ago, I went on a trip with my church to Israel, Palestine and Jordan. And that trip changed my life. It enhanced my faith. And it included learning about Jewish faith and culture, Muslim faith and culture, and Christian faith and culture in the area. I saw many beautiful things. Part of the trip was 10 days. Part of the trip, every night is we met people representing different cultures and backgrounds, from right wing to left wing, every culture imaginable, people who were rabbis, people who were soldiers. It was an amazingly educational trip. We were joined, there were 15 of us, we were joined by five seminary students who happened to be black women. We all got along beautifully. And when we went through a control area, people came on the bus with machine guns. And I saw everybody cowered. And this is what's going on in the country, and they took our passports, got it back, everything was fine. But that set a tone that frankly, I didn't expect. We saw the giant concrete wall separating communities. We saw new communities, Jewish communities, that were beautiful and lush in Palestine. We learned that there are separate roads for Palestinians and Jews in Palestine, better roads for the Jews, less traveled by the Palestinians. We learned how difficult it was to buy land. And at the same time, we saw other communities that were flourishing, that were Palestinian, Bethlehem in particular. It was a very sobering trip. And I didn't bring up the word apartheid, nor did anybody else until we got on the plane going home. And that's, and these are all great people, caring people that were on this trip. And that was the word that came out. And when I think of this issue, there is a difference. When people say there is no apartheid in Israel, I was never in Gaza, so I have no idea, but in Palestine? I'm sorry, it comes close to that. It told me something has to change. And I've read lots of books since I've been back on the issue. There is no easy answer, I get that. Now, I'm going to change track here. When this policy order came out, I have friends on both sides. Frankly, I forgot what BDS stood for. A BDS friend called me and said, "Well, who were you working with?" And I said, "I didn't write it." And they said, "Nobody in the local BDS was involved." That's why I think this is kind of interesting discussion. That doesn't mean BDS doesn't support it. I'm just saying, we're automatically saying this is BDS, and it's the worst people in BDS against the good people in other areas. Something has to change. Our country is one of the best. One of our best friends is Israel. So when I hear people say they're worried about walking in Cambridge, I think about the Palestinians that I met. I think about the army knocking on doors at 2:00 in the morning, waking up the family, taking pictures of everyone, including the eight-year-olds. That's what I think about. This is much more complicated, as everybody has said. And Hamas is a terrorist. Somebody last night, a few people said, "We should be boycotting Hamas." We are boycotting Hamas. It's a terrorist organization. So I think something has to be said. And should Israel be able to defend itself? Of course. But we have to learn to treat people in a better way. And it is a two-sided area in Palestine. There's no question in my mind about that. And that's why I supported the initial policy order. But I also support another policy order that was created that hasn't been presented yet, which I think better expresses the situation. And I realize that might mean there's three different points of view on this, but I think it's a better expression of how I feel. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We'll go to Vice Mayor Malin.
Madam Mayor, through you, I will be brief. I know many of my colleagues expressed their opinions beautifully, and I don't think I can do a better job. But I did want to thank all of the 537 people who came and spoke so eloquently and emotionally last night, sharing their stories about why they support or don't support the policy order that's in front of us. I especially want to thank all of those who waited over seven hours just to speak their one minute. It was that important to them. And I think we all recognize and understand that our job as city councillors is to listen. I got a number of emails this morning thanking us for staying on the line and persevering. And I really want to express that that's our job. Our job is to listen, and we did that last night. I want to thank Counselor Nolan and Counselor McGovern and Simmons for bringing forward the substitute language, which I think what we heard last night, which is, there are human rights violations. They happen in Palestine. They happen in some of the other countries that were brought up earlier. We certainly, as a city, have contracts. We can vote with our money. We should be reviewing all of our contracts to ensure that we are not using taxpayer dollars to support violence in Palestine and elsewhere in the world. I think this policy order really speaks to where I think we can have the most effect, is to review all of our contracts, not only right now, but develop a process for moving forward so that we are not involving and engaging in human rights violations through our dollars. That's where we can be the most effective. So I will be supporting the amended substitute language this evening because, as I mentioned, I think it gets us to where I was hearing all of the issues and all of the emotion that was coming forward last night. This is where it needs to be directed, is reviewing all of our contracts. And I just want to say, you know, I appreciate that other councillors feel like this amended substitute language is presented as a both-sides issue, but I'm just as a really positive step forward in our purchasing and using our money and our taxpayers' dollars to make sure that we are not supporting human rights violations anywhere in the world. So thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be supporting the amended language, but I, again, really appreciate everyone that has emailed, that has called, that has spoken with us personally. We've all done a lot of listening this week, and I'm appreciative. So I'm going to yield back at this point, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else who we haven't heard from? I don't see any. Go ahead, Counselor Toomey. Counselor Toomey?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I have a little problem unmuting myself. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and to my colleagues, and most especially to the public who last weekend, last evening, spoke very passionately and firmly on this issue. This isn't the first time I've voted on this issue. With once, a state representative voiced my opinion within the city somewhere facing some similar divestment from Israel, and I spoke against that. And I believe that at least once in the city council that recently we had this similar issue before us. And it's an issue that clearly pains all of us. I think all of us striving for peace and collaboration between all faiths and peoples' world, especially in Palestine and Israel. I was not going to vote for the first resolution that was introduced by HR 2590, but after rereading it, I still had some issues with the second paragraph, the wording of that. But I thought in terms of the overall aspect of that resolution, I did vote for it. I was not going to vote for the motion that was introduced last week. I've looked very carefully at the substitute language that is before us this evening. And I think that clearly it is something that I will support this evening. I do think it is important that we do recognize that it's not acceptable for the seat of campus to do business with any companies that does business with a lot of the countries that have been mentioned that have extreme cruelty to their citizens. And we've looked, many countries that have been mentioned already, and there are others throughout the world. So it's been, it's always a very passionate debate that we have on this. And, you know, as people have mentioned, that on both sides of the issue that spoke, you know, very sincere and very passionate. And but I think overall that the substitute motion that's here this evening is the correct vote to be taken. And, you know, it does recognize that, you know, there is improvements that have to be made by both groups, by the Israelis and by Hamas. And Israel does have the right to exist. Hamas is. Whether we like it or not, is a terrorist organization recognized by most countries around the world. So I guess, you know, we must all continue to devote our attention and prayers that somehow that peace and reconciliation will come to that part of the world. I unfortunately have not had the privilege of visiting these countries. My brother has, and I know several people have. And all have come back with, you know, very indelible impressions of how that those countries and people are living. And but tonight, I think this, and we'll support the substitute motion by Councillors Nolan, McGovern and Simmons. And I hope that this will pass and that we will continue to do all the work and of the city and the city residents to spread peace throughout, by our actions throughout, not only Massachusetts, but the country and the world. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, very briefly.
Counselor Simmons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just meant to say, as was said by my other colleagues, very importantly was to acknowledge the number of people that called, wrote, emailed. I meant to acknowledge that in my opening remarks. I certainly did appreciate it. And I do want to acknowledge that someone that does truly believe in public involvement. So I just wanted to say that for the record, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I think we've heard from everyone at least month, at least once. You know, this has been this has been difficult. And I think and I said this to the Councillor Zondervan, and I've said this to the motion makers, and I've talked about this issue to a number of folks, about this issue to a number of folks as well. And for me, you know, I think it is really important that we, you know, happening and historically taken place against the Palestinian people by the Israeli government. And I appreciate what, some of what this substitute order does. And I think though it for me, you know, I think where I'm struggling is that I don't think I would have supported the 109 Ezra in either because I don't think it flushes out the issue in a way that it could have been. And ultimately, you know, I have had a few conversations also with our purchasing department and asked, you know, clearly, this order was put in. We don't have contracts with HP directly, but we have indirect contracts. You know, what are the policies and procedures when that happens? And, you know, we talked briefly about chapter 40, chapter not 40B, that's affordable housing, chapter 30B on procurement. We talked about a few of those issues. And, you know, it also made me realize with what was brought up as the original order, you know, I think that putting that work in and figuring out, how do we actually help Palestinian people? How do we actually help people who are suffering right now? And thinking about the different ways, and thinking through that. I don't think the original order does that either. And I do think it's, you know, I think it's a very important point to make that boycotting companies has been done historically. It can be a strong strategy in advocating for a position. And I've seen how it's become, how it's been talked about. So I think for me, I'm in a position where I know there's supports for the substitute order. I'll likely will present for it. And, you know, this is really, it's been, it's been tough because I know this body has come together. has come together and worked together this year on what's been probably the hardest year for most. And it's even harder for so many. And I wish we could have done something together that, you know, was not so much about politics. You know, and the political charade that I feel has happened in this body. So, I'll leave with that. I think, I don't think we can be silent on what is happening to our Palestinian brothers and sisters. And, you know, I'm I, you know, I also think I wish there had been a way to do more on this, to come together and actually have an impact. So, that's all I'll say. I don't see any other hands up. I see Counselor
Call the question?
I did see Counselor Carlo's. Go ahead, Counselor Carlo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your comments. I will also be voting present for what is a pretty good substitute, but nothing will change. Nothing will change if you don't point out what's important. And, and that's why I'll be voting present. Normally, sure. But, you know, in the 60s, excuse me for going back, I was considered anti-American because I was against the Vietnam War. And people said, "We hated America." That wasn't true. We loved the country. It's the same situation here. I'm not anti-Jewish. I'm not anti-Muslim. I'm for humanity. And even with its weaknesses, the first policy order identifies the issue. An important issue, maybe not the issue, but an important issue. And I'm not sure it's the right policy order. As I said, there's a substitute that I think is stronger, another substitute. But I will also be voting present. Thank you.
Counselor Nolan?
Thank you. I think we've all had a chance to talk, and I'd like to call the question.
Clerk Wilson?
Just for clarity, Mayor Siddiqui, has the debate ended? We're going to the question, or are we voting on a motion to call the question?
I think debate has actually ended, so we can, Counselor Nolan, since I don't see any other hands up, we can go ahead and take a vote on the substitute order that you have before us. And just for the record, because there's a substitute order before us, we have to vote on that substitute order. And then, if there were amendments after that, we can make amendments to this substitute order. So, we wanted to clear that up for the folks.
So, this first vote is on the motion to substitute the existing policy order with the language that I'll just display on the screen. The language that has been put forth by Counselors Nolan, McGovern, and Simmons on that vote. Counselor Carlo?
Present.
Present. Vice Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler?
No.
No. Counselor Toomey?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan?
No.
No. Mayor Siddiqui?
Present.
Present. The motion passes five in favor, two present and two against.
We have the substitute motion before us. I will go to, we have Counselor Zondervan. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to introduce an amendment. I will send it
Counselor Zondervan, your amendment should be showing on the screen.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So, the amendment would, looks like it's not displaying the so, amendment would read as follows, that the city manager, this is the first order, that the city manager be and hereby is requested to work with the purchasing department to review Cambridge corporate contracts and purchases to identify any genders or managers, and then to insert whose products are used to perpetuate violations of international human rights laws, such as U.S. Packet Inc. and U.S. Packet Enterprises, and be it further.
Discussion on Counselor Zonner's amendment to the substitute order. Counselor Nolan?
Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui. I appreciate this. We just had seven hours of testimony that any mention of HP will be seen as an endorsement of BDS. I can't support this amendment for that reason. I am just saddened that this would be something we'd be asked to vote on again. It's so clear that this is simply a way to bring in BDS again. I support the right to boycott, as others have said. I am standing firm real anger and sadness about many things, including everything we wrote in the policy order and what people talked about in terms of the Palestinians. But this is just a way to have this become something that supports BDS. Let's be clear. And I think our city, just heard, we're so evenly split already. I could pull out the, you know, friend of mine from Israel who, in his video clip last week, with the sirens going overhead and hearing a bomb explode, I mean, we could play that game. I don't want to. We know there's hurt, there's anger, there's violence. I, this was so carefully written to ensure that we are not taking a stand on BDS, because it has divided the community in a way that is so harmful, so unhealthy, it's not bringing us together. So, sorry to get, I just can't support this, because I think that's what this does. And if people do support it, just be very clear that that's what it is.
Anyone else on this? Counselor Simmons? Counselor Simmons, your hands up?
I'm sorry, I muted myself. I concur with my colleague, Ms. Counselor Nolan. We did work. We were very careful. We wanted to be inclusive. We wanted to be thoughtful. I think what she said is very, very correct. I think the order as it has been voted is clear. It does exactly what the city council should be doing. And so, I will not be voting for the amendment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I don't see any other hands up. Counselor Carlo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have to remind people that years ago, Polaroid was singled out by high school kids and a teacher. And it's exactly the same thing. It, the work that HP does is similar in kind to what Polaroid did. And knocking Polaroid pushed the whole effort for South Africa forward. And we're not saying one side has to give up. All we're saying is that there's some cruelty in surveillance and limitations on one side. That doesn't say there aren't problems on the other side, but it's affecting families and young people. And it's not the right environment to grow up. It actually stirs up more problems. So, if you look at it from that point of view, I think there's only one way to consider it. We're perpetuating by not saying something, we're helping perpetuate what's happening that's causing the creation of radicals. Now, there are other things causing it, but this is an American company that's assisting in that. And I find that, no matter what country, I find it disgusting and totally inappropriate. Thank you. I yield.
Counselor McGovern?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, you know, again, I think there's a lot, I agree with a lot of what I've heard. I would, you know, I think the, I don't question that the Israeli government, first of all, let me just say, I think it's completely appropriate that people can be critical of a government's policies and actions and not be critical of the people who live under that government. We could, I mean, God knows, if I had a dollar for every time I criticized the previous administration in the White House, you know, and that doesn't mean that I'm critical of the United States or the people who live in the United States. So, I think it's fair to call out the human rights violations that are being committed. But again, my issue is that what this is really about is about, and I'm not making this up, this is what people are putting on Twitter, this is what some of the policymakers have put on Twitter, that this is about making Cambridge one of the first cities to support BDS. I don't support BDS in its entirety. I certainly support boycotting. I certainly support calling out injustices. But the BDS movement is complex, and it's big, and there are people in the BDS movement who have taken positions about the eradication of Israel that I don't agree with. And so, if this vote is going to be used on that national level to say, "We now support this entire movement of BDS," then I can't support that. But I certainly support, I agree with Counselor Carlo. And I think, I mean, I think that nobody wants to see houses bulldozed and, you know, and water supplies. Even the people who spoke against the original policy order would agree to that. But again, that's not what this is, that's not how this is being sold in the public. It's being sold as that this vote would mean that the city of Cambridge fully endorses the BDS movement. And that's where I have the problem. If this policy order was different about saying, calling out the Israeli government for their human rights violations, I mean, I just, I co-sponsored the other resolution we voted on earlier calling the same thing. That's different. And to the point that we call up governments all the time, there is a difference. Passing a policy order or a resolution that goes to the State House or DC is different than what this order has become. And so, you know, I just want to make it clear that it's not that, it's not that anyone who has an issue with BDS agrees that the Israeli government is not doing anything wrong. They are. But the BDS movement is not just about boycotting. And that's where, that's where this issue is for me. So, I cannot support a resolution or a policy order that is going to be used to say that I endorse the BDS movement as a whole, because I don't. And that's what this amendment would do. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Sabrina Wheeler?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, through you. I appreciate, you know, my colleagues, I just, you know, wanted to make the point briefly that, you know, it's sort of the same argument that is made a lot of times, and was made in the case of South Africa, for example, that, you know, agree with the policy, but there are violent elements of the push for democracy as a whole, for majority voting, and so can't support this yet. And if you support the policy, support the policy. And that's, you know, sort of the decision that's before us tonight. But I appreciate the warning, and I will yield back.
Anyone else? I think Counselor Zondervan, just through to you, what's being raised is, I think, going back to an earlier point around this, I think if you wanted to write a policy order on BDS and boycott investment sanction, the whole movement, you could have. And, you know, and you didn't. And I'm wondering why. I think it, to the points that have been made earlier, you know, the original order didn't mention it specifically. And now, you know, you're including HP, which I think going to the substitute order itself says, you know, we'll be looking at all contracts, which we'll look at HP. We know already by definition, we do have third-party contracts through WB Mason with them. And it's going to be an issue of whether we can stop buying those contracts, stop getting those ink cartridges from HP, perhaps other countries. So, I think I want to give you a chance to talk a little bit about this. Counselor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate that. And appreciate my colleagues' comments. As Counselor Carlo said very eloquently during the anti-apartheid movement in South Africa, the Polaroid Corporation was explicitly called out for their participation and their publicity. During the fossil fuel divestment campaigns that I've been involved with for many years, we call out specific companies, including Exxon, and even financial companies like Bank of America, that are directly involved in fossil fuel activities. So, I think it's critical as part of this effort to call out the injustice that's happening in Palestine, that we specifically reference U.S. Packet Corporation as a participant, an active participant in this injustice. And that's why I'm asking to amend it into this order.
Counselor Zondervan, did you have conversations? I think some folks, I want to clear the record, some folks said that, maybe it was Counselor Carlo, that the BDS folks didn't know about this order. Did you talk to the BDS movement prior to introducing the original order and with the amendments?
No. I am in conversation with them now, but this order was not prepared with them this past few weeks now.
Okay. Any other questions on the amendment?
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Carlo?
I'll be quick on this. During the progressive era in the United States, 1920s, after World War I, a lot of suggestions were made, and the way many were killed, "Oh, that's a socialist idea. That's a communistic idea. That's a BDS idea." You label it. Now, there might be truth in some of that, but that's not the reason to kill an idea if the idea is good and serves people who need to be helped. I just felt I had to add that. I know I met three BDS people. I met three ADL people the first round of this a few years ago. And they both, all groups were intelligent people, and I told them how I felt, what I experienced. So, that doesn't make me a BDS person, or a communist, or a socialist. There might be beauty in some of those movements, but I pick and choose, and I've chosen the way I feel, not the way someone tells me to feel. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Nolan?
Thank you. I'll be relatively quick. I just, I know I'm being flamed everywhere for like being an apologist for the Israeli government. This is just not a productive way for us to move forward. This type of specificity, when we don't even have a contract with HP, when This type of specificity, when we don't even have a contract with HP, when this is a, I, in college, was one of the people on the streets of Cambridge, actually, fighting for South Africa, various issues. HP is not exactly the same. We can't assume that just because we can talk to one other kind of effort that this is exactly the same. This is pretty different. This, again, I come back to, this is dividing us, not uniting us. This is a specific reference to something that we don't even do. And it does not do our city well to put that kind of thing into a policy order that is about the broad issue of are we doing business with any company in any country that is enabling really severe human rights violations? And it is, as I said and others have said, there's lots of other places that we need to make sure that we should look at. As Counselor McGovern said, if it's, you know, Chick-fil-A, it turns out, we can. So I'm just really saddened also that we are, maybe not in this room, but outside of this room, we're questioning each other's intentions instead of all of us trying desperately to try to do our best in the context of our role as city councilors, best for the city, which I'm trying to do. And I will continue to try to do that and to try to make sure that we do our best job and not be flaming other people, even if they have different views. And I'm really worried about it. It is, I just see this as yet another example of trying to divide us in a way that is really profoundly sad, and we are so not setting the example for people across the city, never mind the state and the country. We are doing the opposite. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Zondervan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, to my colleague, I would like to make sure that we set the record straight. As you said just a few moments ago, we do buy HP products. And so it is in fact not correct to state that this is something we don't even do. We do buy products from this company, and it is not correct to state otherwise.
Any others? I don't see any other hands. So Counselor Zondervan, are there any other amendments or are you sad?
I do have one more amendment after this one.
Okay, do you want to do it now or you want to take them separately?
No, we can do it separately.
Okay. Clerk, will you call the roll?
So on the amendment, which is previously read and is currently on the screen, from Counselor Zondervan, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
No.
No, Counselor McGovern.
No.
No, Counselor Nolan.
No.
No, Counselor Simmons.
No.
No, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
No.
No, Counselor Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor Sadiq.
No.
No, motion fails. Three in favor, six against.
Counselor Zondervan, you have the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will send it to the clerk. I sent the clerk a different amendment to be ordered as well as amendments to two of the whereas statements.
Counselor Carlon, I mean, Counselor Zondervan, I have the amendments. I put the first one on the screen, the first email that I received from you. I just wanted to be clear, is this, is this the vote that we just took?
No, it doesn't reference US Packet at the end.
I'll read it for the record. Counselor Zondervan, is this to the first ordered paragraph as well?
Yes.
That the first ordered paragraph be amended to read as follows. Ordered that the city manager be in hereby is requested to work with the purchasing department to review Cambridge's corporate contracts and purchases to identify any vendors or manufacturers whose products are used to perpetuate violations of international human rights laws, especially information technology companies and other companies providing technology and infrastructure that is used to identify, track, surveil, and incarcerate people, and be it further.
Discussion?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I also have a second email from Counselor Zondervan. It's modifications to two of the whereas paragraphs. Is that a separate motion, Counselor Zondervan, or do you want that all incorporated in this one vote?
We can do a separate motion.
Counselor Nolan?
Yeah. Through you, Mayor Sadiq, I feel like this is the exact same thing. It's just a backdoor way of pointing to a company without, I don't understand why this is included when the language in the substitute, which was very carefully worked out over after last night's discussion with three of us and talking to purchasing about a broad base to ensure that we're looking at human rights, this is just redundant. And again, I really believe that it seems to be just yet another attempt to try to get, now they'll be tweeting out in social, that, oh, they don't even want this. It's, we keep coming back to, can we focus on what we want to do, which is make sure that all of our purchases follow our non-discrimination policy? This is, this is inflammatory, it's divisive, it just, I don't understand why this is brought forth again. It's just like we'll peel away words until it finally works. It's just not very respectful of, I think, the process that we have. So and yet, of course, how could you vote against it? Because it sounds so reasonable. I just wish this was not being played this way.
So I don't think there's anyone else's hands up. So I think we should just proceed to the vote. We have another amendment after this, and then we do have the rest of the agenda to go through. So Clerk?
So on the amendment to the first ordered paragraph, as is shown on the screen, was read previously, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
No.
No, Counselor McGovern.
No.
No, Counselor Nolan.
No.
No, Counselor Simmons.
No.
No, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
No.
No, Counselor Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor Sadiq.
No.
No, the motion fails. Three in favor, six against. The second?
Madam Mayor, just a question for the clerk.
Move ahead, Counselor McGovern.
Is there any way to make these amendments larger on the screen? They're really difficult to read. I don't know.
I'm trying something out. Let me share my screen. Is this better?
Yeah. Much.
So the second amendment, or sorry, the third amendment proposed by Counselor Zondervan. And Counselor Zondervan, this is an amendment to the, I have to look at the original words, to the... It's to the last two whereas paragraphs, is that correct?
I think they're...
I think it's...
The fifth whereas, so the two whereas at the top in black are supposed to be stripped out and then replaced with the two in red below it.
Okay. So this is to strike out these two whereas paragraphs in the amended, in the order that's already been amended. Those paragraphs are whereas paragraphs five and six. And the amendment is to amend them to read as follows. Whereas the city council recognizes that violence and suffering is happening around the world in all countries. And whereas the city council affirms that all people have the right to defend themselves from harm, but the city council also recognizes that the Israeli government has direct, has directed unconscionable destructive attacks against the Palestinian people, and our community should not be willing to play even a minor role in allowing these actions to continue. And...
Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Counselor McGovern?
So the only, through you, the Counselor Zondervan, so the only change I'm seeing here is that you're changing Netanyahu government to Israeli government? On that particular one? Am I reading that right? Am I missing something?
Counselor? Zondervan?
Okay. You took out such those launched by Hamas.
Yeah, it's really a different statement.
So can you just explain why change Netanyahu to Israeli? Again, I think one of the, one of the concerns we heard from a lot of people, and again, this is sort of what I said too, is that I think it's totally appropriate to criticize a government, but it gets very complicated when you start naming the country and people start to assume that it's that you're referring to the people who live in that country. And so I'm trying to, again, I'm trying to be respectful of all the different voices we heard. And so calling out Netanyahu as opposed to Israeli is to make it clear that we're talking about the government and not the people. So can you just help me understand why you're making this change?
Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate it. Through you, to my colleague, it does say Israeli government. So I think it is clear that we are addressing the government. But really, the main purpose here is to make it clear that the impact is disproportionate and that it is disproportionately impacting the Palestinian people as a result of this violence. So that's really important to not make it about, you know, this is equal, because it's not. We have seen the disproportionate impact that this conflict is having on Palestinian people. And when we call out racism in the United States, you know, for example, when we're saying that, you know, COVID-19 is disproportionately affecting our Black and Brown community members, that doesn't mean that it's not affecting our white community members. We're just pointing out that it's disproportionate in the impact. And that's what this language does as well.
Counselor Nolan?
It's a totally different whereas. It takes out that affirming Israel's right to exist. It's not just that it does a disproportionate impact. It actually takes out Israel's right to exist. And it says to defend themselves from harm is pretty different than attacks. It is totally disproportionate impact, and it's not for lack of trying. We heard such moving testimony from people talking about the fact that, yes, so many more people died. This is just one of the conflicts over the years. And yet, there were 4,000 rockets launched by Hamas. It wasn't just for a lack of trying, and it was indiscriminate into civilian areas. So again, your language, what I worry about, if I didn't notice that myself and do a red line, I wouldn't even have noticed that. It wasn't even mentioned in this that we're going to vote on it. And all it does is just put the Israeli government instead of Netanyahu. No, it totally changes the wording above it. This was, again, something worked on with Counselor Simmons and Counselor McGovern very carefully to try to explain that this is something we are trying to thread a needle of an incredibly contentious, really trying, really challenging area of the world, called by some the Middle East, and it actually should be referred to as Swana, you know, Southwest Asia and North Africa, because the very mention of Middle East is a different kind of term that should not be used. And we were really trying to thread the needle here. And again, people can vote on this, but be very clear, it completely changes the whereas that's in there to make it seem like, well, there's just a little bit of harm. And yet, on the other hand, what the Israeli government is doing, again, that's... The motion before us, it's just kind of surprising that wasn't pointed out in the description of this. And I'm happy with the other whereas, that the council recognizes violence and suffering is happening around the world in all countries, because just mentioning Israel instead of at least Israel, Palestine, that one, that whereas makes sense to me. But the other one, I personally won't support, because I do believe the other one was carefully constructed to be very clear about how governments take, definitely have to be held accountable. And this one seems to really dilute that very carefully worded word. I'm interested in knowing whether others feel that way. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, point of information?
Go ahead, Counselor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was getting ready to do the point of information before Counselor Nolan took the floor, because I had also concerns. And I hope that the clerk, can you read what the new fifth whereas would read? I'm looking at it that the fifth whereas would now only read that the city council recognizes that violence and suffering is happening around the world in all countries, and that the whereas that's in black and top would be strict. Is that correct?
Yes. So these are two replacement whereas's?
Correct. Both of these black paragraphs would be stricken, and the fifth whereas paragraph would be replaced with...
So Madam Mayor, through you, the clerk, so where it says the city council affirms Israel's right to exist and to defend its citizens from attacks, except that sector would be strict. And so I could not support that substitution.
Others? Go ahead, Counselor Simmons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As previously stated by Counselor Nolan very eloquently, we worked on this order a great deal. I just have concerns of trying to parse this on the floor. I'm trying to understand where my colleagues coming from, but I'm not there. I can't support these changes. I respectfully ask my colleagues to allow the proposed amended order that's before us now to stand and not to, and let us move on to the other equally important work that we have before us this evening. I would respectfully ask that this order that your colleagues, myself included, worked on remain as it has been offered and voted. And because even though my colleague may be very well-intended, I'm just concerned. So I'm not going to be supporting either order, and I will keep voting until, I'm voting for the order as amended without any additional amendments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is there anyone else? Sorry, did I hear someone? No, I didn't. I don't see other hands up. I think, going back to my earlier points around the first resolution, you know, I think there is this, and someone talks about this, there is a grave asymmetry of power. I think this language, what it says is recognizes the violence and suffering is happening around the world and are in all countries. I think it changes, I think it's still talking about the Israeli government and not Israeli individuals. So I think I know where the votes lie on this. You know, I'm fine with the language. So I think we can just go ahead and do the up and down votes. Clerk Wilson on this. And then I think there's another amendment from Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
On the motion to adopt the amendments proposed by Counselor Zondervan to the two whereas paragraphs, the fifth and sixth paragraph, on that motion, Counselor Carlon.
Present.
Present. Vice Mayor Mallon.
No.
No, Counselor McGovern.
No.
No, Counselor Nolan.
No.
No, Counselor Simmons.
No.
No, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
No.
No, Counselor Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor Sadiq.
Yes.
Yes. Motion fails. Five, I'm sorry, three in favor, five against. Five, I'm sorry, three in favor, five against, and one present.
Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, through you. I'm not trying to make this too long, uh, but this policy order has changed quite a bit from uh what was originally proposed. Um, so I did just want to propose one uh brief uh amendment uh to the order to clarify the intent for the council to vote on, uh, and it gets to the point that most of us uh have made tonight, I think, uh, that we need to make this actionable. Um, so I've sent that language to the clerk.
And Clerk Wilson is going to get that before us.
Uh, and just to clarify before I read this, uh, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler, is this to insert a new ordered paragraph, or is this to amend one of the existing ordered paragraphs?
To add a new ordered paragraph.
So this motion is to insert the following ordered paragraph. Ordered that the city manager being hereby is requested to work with the purchasing department to work with the purchasing department, review Cambridge's corporate contracts and purchases to identify any vendors or manufacturers whose products are used to perpetuate violations of international human rights laws.
Mister Clerk.
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Is it possible to see a redlined version? I'm sorry, we've seen so many versions tonight. I'm not even sure what the change is. This is a brand new ordered paragraph?
My my, again, I'll defer to Counselor Sabrina, Sabrina Wheeler. My understanding is that this is to add another ordered paragraph. I'll try to pull up a redlined copy. Again, Counselor, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler, can correct me, but it's to add, there are currently two ordered paragraphs. This motion is to add an additional ordered paragraph.
Can you scroll up? So it's a third, okay, so it's coming after the second ordered. We should probably just switch them. It should be then that the city manager being hereby is requested to report back that counts on this matter as soon as possible.
I'm realizing um the language is uh similar enough to the original um order that it would make sense to have it be a replacement.
Madam Mayor.
So I we heard Counselor Zanovan, I'm going to go to Counselor McGovern.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna suggest that. Um. Right, and and maybe maybe it can say policy on discrimination or um reduce perpetuate violations of international human rights. So it 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 just keeps both of them.
So do you want to add um Counselor Sabrina Wheeler? Are you to perpetuate vi- violations of international human rights laws and in a violation of Cambridge's po- policy on discrimination? Is that what you're suggesting, Counselor Zanovan?
Right.
Okay, I'll go to Counselor McGovern.
Uh, I I'll yield to Counselor Nolan this time.
Counselor Nolan.
I I have a couple of questions. I is this different from what we already voted down? It looks like it uses the same language. I mean, it's just maybe a little bit different, and my concern is who decides what a violation of international human rights law is. The other one is very clearly based on Cambridge's own policy of discrimination, which is quoted in the order so that we know exactly what it is that we're looking for. I don't understand how it is that we would possibly put this burden on our purchasing department to determine what international human rights laws to use. I mean, maybe there's a body out there, but since it's not specified in the order, if I was the purchasing department, I would be pretty concerned about understanding how I would go about this. It would be something that would be perhaps wonderful to bring in in the future after meeting with the purchasing department or presenting some kind of discussion about international human rights laws, but it, you know, the a- again, our, we have a policy of discrimination. It is written out in full in this order, which was in the order that had been brought to the council with it, which and and it said, let's work to make sure that we're in line with it. This this is so vaguely worded. I I just don't even know how it would be enforceable, and I don't want to pass something that's not enforceable, and I'm also not comfortable passing something if I don't actually know what it's based on. Um, so I maybe there is a a body of international human rights laws, but since we don't have it before us, I I don't understand it. Also, it seems so similar to what we already before voted down. I I don't understand the difference.
I'll go to Counselor Sabrina Wheeler and then Counselor Simmons.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. It's um, I, you know, it's tries to incorporate the the last order. I think it is uh substantially different while also, you know, not so different that it uh isn't something we could all get on board with. I think it it addresses one of the the questions or concerns we heard that, um, you know, this shouldn't uh just be one thing. We should be looking at companies that uh oppress Uighurs in China and and other pieces. I mean, international human rights law is a is a specific thing. Um, there are professors that live in Cambridge who study international human rights law, and if there's any questions, I'm I'm sure they'd happy to work with us on this, like we've done with, you know, multiple ordinances this term that uh uh folks help weigh in on determinate. Um, and there are also bodies that adjudicate this, right? The International Criminal Court, the International Court of Justice, this you know, international human rights law isn't just a vague phrase. These are international laws that the United States and uh numerous other countries have have signed on to. It's a it's a specific piece, you know, the our system operates on on common law. International human rights law uh is a part of that, and and right, the United States is involved in in any number of treaties uh that are mentioned human rights law, and so it's, you know, it is a is a specific thing.
Uh, Counselor Simmons? And then about Zanovan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of things. Um, I don't know how this changes the intent of the order as amended uh other than to slow it down because it it does ask for interpretation that may not exist, but I I think I understand where my colleague is going, and I certainly do want to support it, so I would respectfully ask him to withdraw it, work on it as a separate standalone order. I think my colleague said something about there are people that know know a little bit more about it, that might be able to bring their expertise, and we certainly want to have take advantage of that, so I I would support it if it was a separate standalone order brought in um under new business in another iteration or with some more documentation so we can tease out the nuances. Uh, but I wouldn't support that here. I'm going to go back to what I said earlier. Uh, my colleagues and I worked on this order uh long and hard. We crossed the Ts, we dotted the Is. We were thoughtful and considerate, and I would respectfully ask that we allow the policy order as amended to stand uh and that this uh particular suggestion be withdrawn and be resubmitted under uh as a new policy order. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I yield the floor.
So I'm going to go to Counselor McGovern because we haven't heard from you, and then we'll go back to Counselor Zanovan.
Um, Madam Mayor, I'm 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 still working this through. I think my own, my question is a little bit of a follow up or similar to Counselor Nolan's, and maybe Counselor Sabrina Wheeler or some other counselor could have an answer. Um, it's just a question of again, how how would this be operationalized? I I I don't, I think at putting including human rights um, human rights laws or violations of human rights laws is, I don't necess- I don't disagree with that. Uh, I'm just, again, I'm wondering how that will be. You know, is is that a UN list? I mean, I don't know who, you know, what, how does that get figured out? And um you know, just I'm just looking for clarification on that.
Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Is uh, yeah, thank you. No, I um appreciate that and appreciate the comments. I um um, you know, also worked a lot in the the original order, and you would like to see this uh included with it, and and so we can move forward with it. I think the the questions about, you know, how do we take it and and make it actionable are are good ones. I think um like a lot of the the pieces we sent to the city manager and to staff, there's been some uh back and forth about putting together the the specific policy and putting that on the website and and bringing that to the council, and you know, we can refer it to to committee if we need to get in in detail about, you know, are we just looking at the UN? Are we looking um at the ICCJ and the ICC, and you know, what specific corpus of uh international human rights law are we uh including? Um, I'd say, you know, this is ultimately, you know, city manager be and is hereby uh requested, like all our ordered language, so it it's going to go to the city manager. And we're gonna, they're gonna, you know, put something together and bring it to the council, and then if we we want to bring in professors from the Harvard Law School, from Wesley University, folks who are uh, you know, really uh live this, you know, day to day to to add that expertise, we can we can do that, but this doesn't preclude um anything.
Well, what about Vice Mayor, who we have heard from?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'm just the um the amendment that's still on the screen does not include the addition of the policy on discrimination. Is there a way that the clerk can put the full text of the amendment before us?
So this is the amendment proposed by Counselor Sabrina Wheeler. I know there's been discussion. Uh, either a counselor could move to amend the amendment, or Counselor Sabrina Wheeler could withdraw and propose that language additionally. Is that what you'd like to do, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler?
Thanks, sir. I'm happy to to add that line into um my proposed order.
And there's also a typo, so it's with the purchasing department to review. It's the same text essentially. So, yeah.
Thank you. That was my question. So I yield that.
Anyone else before we proceed to vote on this um amendment?
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor Zanovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That through you to my colleagues, that the um in- international human rights law violations are determined by the United Nations. That's um, I think, pretty straightforward. And and in fact, the um order as amended that as amended that's before us references in, I I believe, the seventh whereas um whether their products are used to perpetuate human rights violations. So it's already men- mentioned the concept, and in fact, this language is is just more specific. Um, we could put in violations of international human rights laws as determined by the United Nations. Um, if we want to be that specific uh to provide guidance to the staff, but that's the international standard is that the United Nations uh adjudicate those laws.
So I don't see any other hands up. Um, so we have the amendment before us. Um, I think Clerk, you can just call the roll.
I just want to make sure I added and Cambridge's policy on discrimination. Is that the correct placement?
Yeah, uh, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes.
On that motion, again, this is to delete the first ordered paragraph and to replace it with the language that has been read and is shown on the screen. Counselor Carlo.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
No.
No. Counselor Simmons.
No.
No. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
No.
No. Counselor Zanovan.
Yeah.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes six in favor, three against.
Any, anyone else before we proceed to vote on the order as amended? I don't see any hands up. Clerk Wilson.
I see hands up from Counselors Zanovan and Counselor Simmons. They may be up from the previous discussion.
Counselor Simmons, Counselor Zanovan?
Uh, thank you, Madam.
Go ahead, Counselor Zanovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think my um raised hand just didn't get lowered. Sorry.
Okay, no problem. Clerk, on the order as amended?
On the order as amended, Counselor Carlo.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zanovan.
Yeah.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
So we now move on.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor Carlo.
I apologize. Uh, I have not been well the last two days, and uh I'm going to have to break away. I I'm sorry. I would love to hear about Universal Pre-K because it's close to my heart, and I fully support the Heart Program. Um, you can always call me if it's critical, but I don't think you'll have to do that tonight. So I apologize. I'm really feeling like I'm going to fall any moment. So take care and.
Feel better, Counselor Carlo.
Forgive me.
Thank you. Take care. So uh, we don't actually have anything before us right now um on Universal Pre-K. It's on the table, so we'll keep that on the table because we don't have the information that was requested. Um, we're going to keep the other number four tabled as well, and then the rest, I think, uh, as Clerk mentioned, will be before us in June when we wrote um on the budget, so.
Madam Mayor, point of information.
Go ahead, Counselor Toomey.
Is it appropriate on the for the loan artist to vote on those six, seven, eight, nine tonight?
So Clerk recommended we wait.
The reason why?
Madam Mayor, uh, through you to Counselor Toomey, uh, so the loan orders have to be advertised. Uh, I think a week before they can be voted on, they were advertised. That's why they appeared that they can be voted on. Uh, we discussed this with the finance department. These are part of the city's budget. Um, and as happens every year, uh, these should be voted on at the same time that the budget is is voted on.
Okay, so we'll go to applications and petitions pleasure of the city council. I don't see any hands up, so.
Madam Mayor.
Ooh, okay, we'll go to Counselors Zanovan and then Counselor Nolan.
Number one.
Number one. Counselor Nolan.
That was the one I was going to pull, Mayor Siddiqui.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call on two and three.
On adoptions, on adoption of applications number two and number three, Counselor Carlo, absent. Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yeah, yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zanovan.
Yeah.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, one absent.
We're on to application petition number one. A petition was received from Lauren Craft requesting that the city council ordain ordinance language relative to the creation and operation of neighborhood conservation districts in the in the city. Uh, the motion on this would be to refer to ordinance committee. Counselor Zanovan, you pulled this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, well, well, I think it's fine to um have a look at this section of the law. It's it's not actually a zoning petition. And so we don't have to move it to the ordinance committee. Um, so my preference would be that we put it on file, and then the chairs of the ordinance committee can can hold a hearing on on this part of the law, and we can have a discussion on on how we want to change it, but these very specific changes don't necessarily have to be uh referred to the ordinance committee.
Discussion. Clerk Wilson, can you I I know that I think the clerk, you put it as refer to ordinance committee. Can you?
Through you, Mayor Siddiqui, your uh Counselor Zanovan is correct. Um, this is not a zoning amendment. It's an amendment to the municipal ordinances, and therefore it does not have to um uh be referred to the ordinance committee. The council could act on it up or down um or, you know, in any way it wishes uh on tonight's meeting.
With the pleasure. Counselor Zanovan, go back to you, and then Counselor Nolan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I I moved that we place this on file.
Counselor Nolan.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Siddiqui. I um I I like some of the ideas in this. I think it's an important discussion to have, and yet there we did get an email on wondering what the proper way to communicate to people that it's okay to bring petitions before us. I don't know if uh Counselor's got a chance to read it. I had actually, last week, when I saw it on the agenda, reached out to the clerk and the city solicitor. And there was some, they pointed me to a section of the state law under petitions, but that part, it's not totally clear that it actually refers to this kind of petition because certain kinds of petition. because certain kinds of petitions require, anybody can bring a petition to the, to the City Council, but it has to have 10% of registered voters. Again, this is something the council itself could decide to bring forward and go to the ordinance committee. But I am concerned that we need a clear opinion on how it is that citizens can bring this forward and have it be put onto our agenda because this is not a zoning petition. And it, it could mean that any ordinance that we've ever passed would be subject to this kind of petition. Again, I actually think the substance of this petition is something we should look at. We should look at how it is that conservation districts are, neighborhood and conservation districts are formulated. And yet there's the question of the process by which this came here. So in order to have a discussion on that, I think placing it on file and then having the ordinance committee bring forward whatever they want while we get a legal opinion on how it is that petitions are properly before the body would make sense.
Counselor McGovern.
Madam Mayor, through you to the clerk. Is this petition out of order?
So I spoke with Counselor Nolan about this and I have, I've had discussions with the City Solicitor's Office when I first became the city clerk. And this, from my understanding, in Cambridge's, there's a properly submitted citizen's petition to amend an or, municipal ordinance in the city of Cambridge.
Through you, Madam Mayor. So according to our clerk, who is an expert in this area, this, this policy, this petition is in order. Let's be clear, placing something on file basically kills it. So that's what placing it on file would do. It goes away. If there was a question that somebody had about whether or not this was properly filed or not, they could sort of certainly charter right and get that answer, but we just heard the answer. So, you know, I'm not going to discuss the merits of the petition because that's why we send things to the ordinance committee to have those conversations. So I would not support placing this on file. We should send it to the ordinance committee. I'm co-chair of the ordinance committee, more than happy to schedule a meeting. And, and we should give it its due diligence.
So I'm moved. So I did see, we haven't heard from Counselor Toomey. And so I'd like to go to him.
Madam Mayor, point of order?
Go ahead, Counselors Ondervan. State your point and order.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The motion is to send it, to place it on file. I made that motion. So that's what we're debating now. And then if that motion fails, we can, we can certainly make a different motion.
So Clerk Wilson, just to be clear, placing on this file would, to Counselor McGovern's point, just defeat it or the amendments wouldn't, nothing would happen to the amendments? Is that what I hear was said?
That is correct. Placing on the file will take it off of the City Council's docket. It will be placed in the files of the City Council as being presented, but not acted upon.
And Counselor Ondervan, is that your intent?
Madam Mayor, just again, point of order, just because we place it on file doesn't mean that the ordinance committee can't take up the matter. It just means that the ordinance committee doesn't have to necessarily consider the specific language. So the ordinance committee can hold a hearing on this section of the law and consider changes to it, including the ones that are in the petition. But it doesn't preclude the ordinance committee from having that, that meeting. But if we refer this specific language to the ordinance committee, then they would need to consider this specific language, which I think is excessive. I don't think we need to, we need to do that. We can, we can just have an ordinance committee hearing on this section of the law and consider some ideas that are in the petition and consider other ideas as well.
So before us is Counselor Ondervan's motion to place this on file. If you'd like to speak to that, the motion that was before us and just speak to that and not make a new motion, I'll allow you to speak. I think we have Counselor Toomey, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll speak very directly to placing this on file. I mean, clearly the intention of my colleagues is to, to kill this and to deny the right of these petitioners to have a hearing before the Cambridge City Council. And I think that's going to set a very dangerous precedent as we move forward. I have no opinion on this petition, but I think if people file this petition, they have the right to be heard by the Cambridge City Council. And we can then make a decision one way or the other on it. But this clearly is in a very dangerous territory that we're wading into to deny rights of our citizens to be able to participate in our city government. I think it just has a very terrible, terrible message. Counselor Zondervan, you might oppose this and that's fine. You're all the, your double talk there on this. You don't want to have this before us. The fact is, the citizens have the right to petition the government of the city of Cambridge. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'll be voting no against placing this on file.
Okay. So please, folks, direct comments to me. Don't mention other counselors. We're going to go to Counselor Sabrina Wheeler. And this is on Counselor Ondervan's motion to place this on file. So we'll go to Counselor Sabrina Wheeler and then, and then Counselor Simmons and then Vice Mayor. Go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I appreciate my colleague, don't support this motion, would like to see this moved to ordinance committee. We get lots of petitions from, from developers, from residents, from the council that aren't perfect. And I was very clear in I think our last ordinance committee meeting that I thought the petition we had on the Broad Canal was extremely flawed. And if they didn't fix it, I was happy to kill it after that. But, you know, we, we gave it a hearing. I think we should move forward and give this a hearing. There are issues with, with neighborhood conservation districts. This is one proposal there to get the conversation going. So don't support this motion. Yield back.
Counselor Simmons, then Vice Mayor, and then we can take a vote.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Communications is one place through which the citizens can directly interact with the City Council, say this is something that we're interested in knowing more about, have an opinion on. We'd like to see some discussion on it. And as I, I think I'm right in saying this, communications are something that the public cannot talk to generally. So, or they don't. This is this individual and supporters way of saying, I would like to be heard on this. Counselor McGovern, who is the co-chair of ordinance, has said that he is willing to have a hearing on this. So that being the case, I would have to respectfully vote down my colleague's order to lay this on the table. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you. I, I had a question for the clerk, which is, did the petitioners meet with you prior to submitting this petition? And did you advise them of the procedure that we are at this moment?
I did speak to the petitioners, I believe through a telephone call, perhaps an email. We spoke about the number of signatures required for the petition. And just sort of generally identified the section of the ordinance they were planning to amend. As far as what would happen at the council, not specifically how the vote would happen at the council, no.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to my colleagues. I certainly think that if, I, I've been on this council for three and a half years now. We've had a number of citizens' petitions. We've always referred them. We've always ensured that, I think there's over 100 signatories on this petition. We've always made sure that they were heard. And to my colleagues' assertion that these are excessive and we could hear the matter in ordinance ourselves, I certainly have heard plenty of petitions that I thought were excessive. And we've made substantive changes on the floor and the ordinance committee as the city council, as the governing body. So I would not be in favor of placing this on file. I think this should go to the ordinance committee. We should have a full hearing. We should have the city solicitor provide us information about what is the procedure. But I certainly agree with my colleague Counselor Toomey that it would be a dangerous place for us to be tonight if we were to defy the petition, to have and hold a hearing on this actual petition. So I will not be in favor of placing it on file. I do think we should forward it on to the ordinance committee. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yield back.
Okay. I've heard from everyone at these ones. Counselor Ondervan, I'll let you respond. And then we need to go vote on your motion. Counselor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate that. I, I just want to set the record straight because I'm hearing confusion on the part of my colleagues. Again, this petition is not a zoning amendment. And so therefore, we are not required to forward it to the ordinance committee. And not doing so is not subverting anyone's rights or stepping on anyone's rights. And we, we are hearing the petition. We've read it. We are placing it on file. And then the committee chairs can certainly schedule a hearing. But, but to state that placing it on file is subverting anyone's rights or that we need a legal opinion on it is simply not correct. The law is very clear. This is not a zoning petition. We do not have to forward it to the ordinance committee. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Counselor, and then we have to vote on the motion before us.
Okay. No, I, I think Counselor Zondervan is correct. It's not a zoning amendment, which would require us to send it on. But it is a citizen's petition. And we, the practice of this council is to forward these on to the ordinance committee. So to not do that would be saying that we do not want to consider this petition that was signed by, by all of these residents. And, you know, if it was a different petition, we wouldn't be doing it. So he is correct. We are not mandated to do it, but we would be sending a pretty strong message if we didn't. And that would be a mistake.
So Clerk Wilson, can you call the roll on Counselor Ondervan's motion?
This motion is to place the petition on file. On that motion, Counselor Carlo, absent. Vice Mayor Mallon.
No.
No. Counselor McGovern.
No.
No. Counselor Nolan.
No.
No. Counselor Simmons.
No.
No. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
No.
No. Counselor Toomey.
No.
No. Counselor Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
No.
No. The motion fails. One in favor, seven against, one absent.
I'll entertain a motion to refer this to the ordinance committee. On that motion by Counselor McGovern, we'll do a roll call.
On that motion, Counselor Carlo, absent. Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, one absent.
We're now on to communications. I'll entertain a motion to place this on file. From Counselor Simmons to place communications one through 31 on file. Roll call.
On that motion, Counselor Carlo, absent. Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, one absent.
We're now on to resolutions. Pleasure of the City Council.
Will the adoption make them unanimous upon adoption?
On Counselor Simmons' motion to adopt resolutions one through five. Roll call.
On that motion, Counselor Carlo, absent. Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, one absent.
We're on to policy orders and resolutions. Pleasure of the City Council.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Zondervan?
Number two and number three.
Number two and three. I'll briefly pull one to just talk about Memorial Day. So all the policy and orders are pulled. The first one commemorating Memorial Day is filed by myself, Vice Mayor Mallon, Counselor McGovern, and Counselor Toomey. We will again be participating in a kind of a virtual program this year that we have, we wanted to put on record just to commemorate the day and thank those brave women and men who've, you know, laid down their, their lives and stand in solidarity with their families. And we've asked the city manager to light up City Hall in gold to pay tribute to those who've died and remembering and thanking them for their service. So I wanted to just pull that. And seeing no other hands on adoption, we'll do a roll call.
On that motion, Counselor Carlo, absent. Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, one absent.
We're going to go to policy order number two, that the City Council amend the Article 22 of the zoning ordinance of the city of Cambridge entitled to Saint Paul Design and Development to insert a new section, 22.24.4. This was filed by Counselor Zondervan, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler, Counselor Carlo, and Counselor Nolan. Counselor Zondervan, you have a floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this is before us, again, the clerk can explain, but essentially this zoning petition was in danger of expiring and a ordinance committee meeting had not been scheduled in time. So he advised us to refile it so that it can be sent to ordinance and planning board for a year.
Through you, Mayor Siddiqui. Counselor Zondervan submitted the exact same language as a, for zoning ordinance, I believe, in April. Due to the ordinance committee's schedule, they were not able to schedule a meeting on this particular item. The meeting has to happen within 65 days of referral. And there also has to be a two-week advertisement period because of the schedule of the ordinance committee. They weren't going to be able to meet that deadline. So Counselor Zondervan was advised that he should refile. And then the ordinance committee will, you know, through the chairs, set a time to meet on the item.
Okay. I don't see any hands on this. So a motion, more, an emotion to refer to ordinance committee and planning board for hearing report. You can do a roll call.
On that motion, Counselor Carlo, absent. Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, one absent.
We're going to go to policy order number three on the Cambridge Heart proposal. This was filed by Counselor Nolan, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler, and Counselor Carlo. I'll go to the motion makers first and then Counselors Ondervan. Counselor Nolan?
An exciting policy order. I'm glad the council is discussing it. HEART is an incredible acronym standing for Holistic Emergency Alternative Response Team, Cambridge HEART. I hope everyone's had a chance to look at the extensive proposal and I hope they've looked at the hard work that went into this. I hope it passes unanimously tonight. To put it in context, last year, following the murder of George Floyd and the collective action of hundreds, if not thousands, of Cambridge residents, the council unanimously passed an order asking for the manager to determine the feasibility of an alternative public safety crisis response system. That policy order was sponsored by the entire council, led by the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Mallon and Mayor Siddiqui. The HEART proposal, coordinated by the Black Response, is a framework for what that system could look like and gets us closer to the vision that was laid out very clearly in that policy order. I want to briefly read from the proposal. "As the acronym HEART suggests, the development envisioned for this organization has been guided by a deep sense of love, love for our communities and a belief that love must be at the center of any long-term solution to public safety. It seeks to further the well-being of all people in Cambridge, particularly those who are most vulnerable to experiencing the violence of our current institutions, which includes black and brown people, disabled people, folks experiencing houselessness, low-income people, immigrants, and all of those living at the intersection of these identities." That's from the proposal. "The writing of this proposal was a collaborative effort with individuals, groups, and organizations in Cambridge and reaching out beyond Cambridge for the best practice across the country. The people and organizations working on it gave of their time, energy, passion, and dedication on a completely volunteer basis to develop an extensive, comprehensive proposal. Read it and take it in. This is what engaged activism can yield. They sought counsel from organizations that have implemented successful programs in other places in the past, including the Kahoots-Whiteberg Clinic, which was directly referenced in the City Council's initial policy order, which many of us read about in the context of addressing police actions when The Globe and other journalistic endeavors across the country identified it..." when The Globe and other journalistic endeavors across the country identified it as the central and one of the first alternative police response systems. And this was referred to as a model and this, the White, the Kahoots-Whiteburg Clinic have endorsed this exact proposal. As the policy order recognizes that collaborative work should continue before this proposal is fully implemented, the policy order is clear that if this passes, a program will not be fully funded tomorrow. Rather, it will begin the process of implementing an alternative public safety program this year with continuing collaboration from groups that have written this proposal and others in the community. And HEART should be funded. It includes so many resources and thoughtful ideas that will radically reshape how we approach community safety. I know that just later on in this meeting, we'll be talking about the report from the task force, which we heard reference to in, in public comment a few times. It has, shares a lot of the same vision. And also, there are some key differences. I hope we can pass this policy order tonight and formally endorse that process that led to it and start the next phase of work. I yield the floor.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I know you're gonna go to Counselors Zondervan, but could we move suspension to bring the communication from other city officers as well, so we can discuss both of these at the same time, since they're related?
So Counselor Zondervan has the floor, so if it'll allow that, then we can do that. Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I do support this order, but-
We have no community reports. We're on to communications and reports from other city officers.
Madam Mayor?
Sorry, let me finish. We've disposed of number three and we have one and two. Counselor McGovern?
Thank you. I'd like to pull number one.
Number one. And then number two is a communication for me from the schools. We can do a roll call and placing that on file. Clerk?
On a, on a placing that matter on file, Counselor Carlo, absent. Vice Mayor Mallon?
Yes.
Yes, yes, Counselor Toomey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan?
Yeah?
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui?
Yes.
Motion passes, eight in favor, one-
I want to thank all the members of the task force that participated. We met weekly, a few weeks here off, once, once in a while. But pretty much weekly from February into, into May. I know that, you know, we, there's a lot of similarities between what the task force came up with and what the HEART program came up with. They approached the issue a little bit differently. But this is, I think, a lot of great work. I think Counselor Nolan was-
Tuesday, going back to February. And that's just the Tuesdays. There was all of, a great deal of committee work and I would say individual work that came into play. People that did not or were not formerly a part of the advisory, met with the advisory in either subcommittee or in the larger committee to give their information. It was a broad, it was a cornucopia of voices, similar to what my colleague said. People that came with a diversity of thought and opinion came to this meeting and I was just extraordinarily pleased with the level of commitment because we did ask people to come every, every Tuesday for several weeks and worked very, very diligently to come with the document that is before you. We do acknowledge the members of the advisory committee and, and the participants therein in the report. And I hope that everyone has an opportunity to, to read it thoroughly. But again, I cannot say to my co-chair and to the commissioner and to all those that participated. This was an extraordinary effort with extraordinary work put into it. And I'm pleased to see it come to, to the City Council for a discussion, for the discussion. I do also want to acknowledge the, the independent group. We had two of their members, or at least two people that attended to both our advisory group and the independent group. I believe that we are just an incredible city, that this kind of thing can happen. And only something good will come from it, I am assured. So I, I'm just very pleased that we've gotten to this place and now we're on to the next step. I look forward to having further discussion. Madam Mayor, are you the floor?
We'll go to Vice Mayor Mallon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to the co-chairs of the Future of Policing Task Force for bringing forward this recommendation and all of the members that served on the task force for the last several months, working diligently to put these recommendations together. I was so excited to see this on the agenda. I know, I just want to acknowledge that today is the anniversary of George Floyd's murder. And in the wake of his murder last year, there was a tremendous amount of discussion and conversation in the community about the future of policing and how we could get to this point where I think we are, which is some recommendations on an unarmed police, you know, an unarmed response to deal with things like mental health issues, homelessness, crisis, bereavement, all of these opportunities for an unarmed response. I'm so proud of the City of Cambridge for coming forward and working on this and providing these recommendations for us here tonight. I'm also really grateful. I'm disappointed that we didn't get to talk about the HEART proposal because I know that there was another group that was working diligently on this as well, which is referenced in the task force's recommendations. You know, really thanking that, that other group that was also working on this. I think it just speaks to what a great idea and opportunity this is. And we're at this moment in time where our community has come together and said, this is a thing that we want. This is the future of public safety. How can we make sure that public safety feels safe for everyone? So I'm really looking forward to what's next, the next steps, both for these task force recommendations and for the other item that we will be discussing, I guess, next Monday night. But again, thank you to the task force members. Thank you to Counselors McGovern and Simmons for putting this together and placing this on the agenda tonight. I do think it's a momentous opportunity for us to be talking about on the anniversary of George Floyd. So thank you, Madam Mayor. We yield back.
Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, to you and to my colleagues. My thanks as well for this report. I, I read it very carefully. It's definitely a good report and makes some good recommendations. And I've also been working with the group, Black Response, that put forward the HEART proposal as well. I think both of these proposals should be heard in, in a public hearing. And so my recommendation would be that we refer this to committee. We could do another joint committee hearing like we did last time with Public Safety and Human Services, if the chair is willing. And have another folk about these proposals.
I see Counselor Nolan's hand up and then I'll go back to Counselor McGovern. Counselor McGovern, I called you Counselor Government. Counselor McGovern?
Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui. I want to echo the excitement of my colleagues on this. Note the anniversary that is quite poignant and point out that for those who haven't had a chance to digest it entirely, it, it was good to have a summary of some of the data that we're talking about in the 911 calls. It's by neighborhood. It's in the, it's in the report. I'm, I'm glad that the task force was able to gather that together. And that the recommendation to create a new department, Department of Community Safety, is something that the most forward-thinking cities in the country are looking at. It is within the City of Cambridge and yet it is separate department. It is not housed within the police department. I think that's a key recommendation that I, I hope is acted on so that when we move forward, this is a separate organization. I know, again, we aren't, don't have a chance to talk about the HEART proposal. That also has some suggestions about how it is that we ensure that as we move forward, that members of our community feel heard, feel protected, and get, get the support that they need. This really has to be, we have to move from a mentality we have that, that we need a Department of Police and to say we actually need a Department of Community Safety. It should encompass so many different areas. So I'm very happy that this is before us. I'm grateful also that they did it in some relatively short amount of time and actually came up with a specific recommendation. I have to say that does not always happen. You know, we really needed this and looked to this task force to come forward with a specific recommendation. And that is in this, included in this report. And I think that's a very positive step for all of us to remind us it came out of the urgency and the cries within our community that we need to ensure that this is not just talk, that we are actually going to take some action, which I hope can happen very soon. I'm not sure about what, what the fastest way to get this to the next steps are. So I look to the chairs of the committee of, of what their recommendation would be to make sure that we can do what, whatever we can as a council to move this forward and get this in, in place. Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui.
We'll go to Counselor McGovern?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I think just to the, the, the two approaches, there's a lot of similarities. There's a lot of crossover. We talked to virtually all the same people. The Black Response, where there was a member of the Black Response that was a, a member of the task force. They presented to the task force. I've certainly talked to them several times individually. The, the difference is what our charge was on the task force was to create a program under the city government other than the police department. And that's, there's a, that's one of the main differences where the other proposal is a nonprofit that sits outside of the city. Is actually, I think, benefits and challenges to both. And I think they actually could fit pretty nicely together if that, if that's what we wanted to do. So I, I just, what I would recommend, rather than sending this to a joint committee of human services, which I chair, and public safety, I'm a little confused because with the HEART proposal, we can't vote on it because of the charter right. So we can't really vote to send that anywhere tonight. And so I would actually recommend, Madam Mayor, not to put more work on your plate, but I think to give, but to make sure that, you know, not every counselor would, even if it's a joint committee, not every counselor would be able to be part of those discussions and to vote on those discussions. I would, I would rather that the city manager work with you, Madam Mayor, to lead the process and to lead the community conversation so that all members of the council could be at the table to discuss this, rather than it going to any particular committee. I think this is a really important initiative. I think it's, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity for the mayor's office to lead. And I think that would be more inclusive of all members of the council. So I would not suggest we send this to a committee. I suggest we pass this. You and the city manager work together to come up with a process on, on how to move forward. Hopefully, we'll pass the HEART proposal when we come back in two weeks after the holiday. And we can move these things jointly to, you know, together and have those meetings together and have them be considered side by side as complementary proposals.
I see Counselor Simmons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would certainly concur with my co-chair. The assignment by, of the committee was to go back to the city manager and the city manager is going to send it then to the council. But as my colleague has said, there are two proposals that in so many ways are, are complementary and even collaborative in a lot of ways. Unfortunately, we cannot discuss the second one because, because a colleague has moved their charter right. But we can be proactive about the, the city manager's advisory. And so I would certainly stand with my colleague and say, I would recommend that we send it, I would say, neutral body to you, you, Madam Mayor, to work with the city manager on a public process that the full city council could participate in as well as the community. And so I would respectfully ask that we would move the suggested, maybe to substitute, a substitute to my colleagues, which is asking it to go to a committee, which some might see as biased, which, of course, we, we would try, we always try not to be biased. But by sending it to Madam Mayor, again, your, your plate is full. So we would ask respectfully that you would take on this charge. So I would support a substitute motion, which would be to refer at least this part. And hopefully, when we come back and can talk about the HEART proposal, the HEART proposal both to you, to be worked on in tandem. Are you the floor?
Well, I, I'll go back to Counselor Zondervan and I'll just say, I do have a lot on my plate. I think I can, you know, I'm fine with that. I'll work with the Vice Mayor, who is, who hopefully can help me do this as there's, there's a lot going on. So I, I'm fine with that. I know that Counselor, I think, Zondervan did have a, I don't know if you did actually propose a motion. So I'll just go back to you and then we can go from there. Go ahead, Counselor Zondervan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I did not make a motion. I made a suggestion, so we, we don't have to do anything about it. But I, I do take, not offense, but, but I, I do think it's, it's a little bit unfair to suggest that there's bias or that, you know, the, the proposal wouldn't get a fair hearing in, in a joint committee hearing. And all the members of the council are, are welcome to attend any committee hearings. So, you know, I, I do understand that you're full plate. I, I don't see any real downside or, you know, reason not to have a committee hearing on it, which, which seems proper. It's a, it's a pretty substantial proposal, as it's a hard proposal. And it would make sense to have a committee hearing on it. We can do it in a, in a joint committee and, you know, that increases certainly the membership of the committee. But I don't think we need to take any consequential votes in such a committee hearing. The, the point of the, the hearing simply would be to discuss the proposal and have folks be able to get their questions answered. So, but again, I, I didn't make any formal motion. I believe the motion on the table, on the floor is simply to place this on file so we can decide how to conduct a hearing about it regardless of, of that motion.
I, I think, you know, we'll have, there's a charter in writing. We'll get to that Monday. I can, I think we should just go ahead and place this on file. And then I've heard some of the recommendations and, you know, I'll do some thinking on, on that. And I'm, I think then we can talk again on Monday night, next, in two weeks. And what, yeah, because we don't have a meeting next Monday. So I'm happy to do what everyone come, to come, to come to some sort of agreement. But I think I will talk to the city manager, so.
Move to place on file?
On that motion, Clerk Wilson?
On that motion, Counselor Carlo, absent. Vice Mayor Mallon?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons?
Yep.
Counselor Simmons?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan?
Yeah?
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui?
Yes.
Motion passes, eight in favor, one absent.
Are there any late resolutions, Clerk Wilson? Clerk?
Pardon me, I was muted. There were three late resolutions.
Can you read the late resolutions?
Yes. I'm just gonna share. So the first late resolution is from Counselor Simmons. The resolved paragraphs read that the City Council formally go on record in wishing Helen Merrell a very happy and healthy 92nd birthday, with many happy and healthy birthdays to come. And be it further resolved that the city clerk being hereby is requested to forward a suitably engrossed copy of the resolution to Helen Merrell on behalf of the entire City Council. The second resolution from Counsel, is also from Counselor Simmons. The resolved paragraph reads, resolve that a suitable resolution be prepared on the death of Doreen Merchant. The third resolution is also from Counselor Simmons. The resolved paragraphs read, resolve that the City Council formally go on record in welcoming Prince Hall Masons to Cambridge on May 31st, 2021, and wish them a pleasant and meaningful visit. And be it further resolved that the city clerk being hereby is requested to forward a suitably engrossed copy of the resolution to William H. Walker of the Prince Hall Memorial Day Committee on behalf of the entire City Council.
On the resolutions, roll call?
On the resolutions, Counselor Carlo, absent. Vice Mayor Mallon?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan?
Yeah?
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui?
Yes.
Motion passes, eight in favor, one absent.
Are there any late policy orders, Clerk Wilson?
I have one late policy order submitted by the city. I'm sorry, I, I have no late policy orders. I have one late application submitted by the city.
Please go ahead and read it.
We have to have a motion to suspend the rules to go to the late application.
Yes. Yes, go, uh, can we please do a roll call on suspension to hear the item?
On suspension to hear the, uh, late application, Councilor Carlo, absent, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, uh, one absent.
Clerk Wilson, go ahead.
The late, uh, applications, the application to place banners on, uh, Cambridge Street, it's, the order paragraph reads that ordered that in accordance with the provisions of the ordinance relative to placing and maintaining ba- banners, the Commissioner of Public Works being hereby is authorized a grant to permit to Cambridge to, to grant a permit to the Cambridge Budget Division Finance Department. And the Cambridge, and the, um, banners we placed on seven ninety-five Massachusetts Avenue, uh, this is, um, advertising, um, the participatory budgeting.
Any questions, concerns?
What with adoption?
On that motion, Clerk Wilson?
On adoption, Councilor Carlo, absent, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, one absent.
Are there any announcements from the council? I don't see any, so on a motion to adjourn by Vice Mayor Mallon, we'll do a roll call.
On that motion, Councilor Carlo, absent, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, one absent.
Good night, everyone. Take care.
Good night. Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui.